Good morning and welcome everyone. We'll start the session this morning with the work session with our county engineer Anthony Barget.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
So I believe all three board members were at the last RPA meeting. I think I saw all three of you in attendance there. Is that correct? Where we talked about the RCTP discussion and made a motion to make some changes with that program. And were you there as well?
I believe so.
They were, okay. So I just wanted to summarize kind of where we're headed with the RCTP program. And then also we have Chandra Revada with ECIA here to chime in on anything extra. So I'm going to read all that email that that kind of the Chandra sent out to the engineers and I just wanted to summarize this. So the RPA Board approved 13.74% of the STBG funding to the small cities. So we increased it from 10% formally to now 13.74%. Also during that same meeting at the RPA, $250,000 was approved to the city of Grand Mound for their Y54 East Streets, leaving 266,000 for RCTP program for federal fiscal years 24, 25, and 26. So then what this means is each county can get around $22,200 for the next three years from the STBG program in reimbursements. So as it states, you know, we've been doing a one-on-one match. We've been sending out $75,000 to the small cities and receiving 75,000 back in STBG funds. Going forward in these three fiscal years, it's going to be $22,200. So a pretty good reduction from what we've, you know, we've been planning. You know, certainly Chandra can can chime in and give a little more detail to that, but I wanted to to bring that to your attention. I believe my Delaware Board is looking at possibly increasing from their own local fund up to the 75. That hasn't been decided yet. There's just been some discussion on that. That does not mean we would receive reimbursement for the STBG. We'd still be short on that, but they're looking at trying to fully fund their program over there. So just wanted to throw this out to you for general discussion. If you have any comments, you know, based on what you've heard here.
You say the funding number is going up, increasing or decreasing? I would like the volume up some. This is not a meeting I attend.
The RCTP reimbursement to the county is going is decreasing, going down. So that automatically means that if we're on a one-on-one ratio, we're only allowed $22,200 per fiscal year to all the small cities where we've been allowing $75,000. So it's decreasing.
Our colleagues to Delaware County and Jackson County both spoke about keeping the program viable and avoiding reduction, but then voted in a compromise to reduce it. So I was against it. I thought we should keep the funding for the small towns and I still believe that. So I would be in support of figuring out ways to do it. It was unfortunate that we weren't able to accomplish that.
Well, the the difficult thing with this is that as we increase the percentage, there was a couple of scenarios that were presented. One was 15% and I think 17%. And yes, that increases the the funding for the small cities, but it pulls away the funding from the counties and cities over 5,000 population. So the increased funding that we're seeing through the infrastructure bill is just being decreased by this program. So we're, you know, we're already pulling back from our increased funds from this from the infrastructure bill.
As we go along in the future years, I'd really like to see you highlight at some time where the infrastructure bill has helped us with roads. I mean, it would be nice if you could do that shout out when that happens where you could say, and this increase is because of the infrastructure bill. Because I just don't, I don't, I am not aware that that's helping at all at this point. It's missing us.
Yeah, well, right now it's, the funding hasn't even come through yet, you know, so it's coming into the next year. I think it's going to be minimal at best, you know, because we have the match requirements. You know, we're seeing about a 10% increase, but that's kind of being reduced a little bit from these programs like this. Then you take inflation to it. I mean, everything's up quite a bit. I'm about to discuss the, you know, the projects list here and, you know, we're quite a bit over budget on that. So it's minimal at best, you know, what we're seeing for the benefit of the infrastructure bill.
Hopefully, once they release this infrastructure funding, it will turn around and look a little better, but I'm not real optimistic about it either, but.
I'm not either. I mean, because I mean, we we've been given the actual percentages we're going to see. Now there's the the various grants out there that 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 could be, can we, we can go after. You know, we'll definitely be looking for those things, but they're highly competitive and, you know, they're not direct allocations like we're like we're used to. Would you like, Chandra, to discuss anything with this?
Chandra, if you want to add to this discussion or?
Yeah, what Anthony said is accurate. The problem what we had is the funding for county small city programs would have been at 75,000 if we did not fund the Rickersville project for Iowa III where the RPA Board gave 250,000. And then if we, if the board did not approve the Grand Mound project for 250,000. So when we analyze the projects in month of February, we assume that we'll get a 25% increase. That's what we heard from the feds. Later on, the feds corrected us saying the 25,000 is for all transportation money combined. So but the programs which are existing did not get 25% increase. They got smaller percentages of increases. Whereas the new programs like the Clean Air and Sustainability Programs, they got 100%. They are brand new programs. So overall, the transportation bill gave 25,000 increase, but the core programs which are existing did not see that. So with that, as we already approved these two projects, that brought down the balance to 260,000. Otherwise, would have been fine where we are, so.
Thank you, Chandra. Anyone have anything for Chandra?
Just one more quick update to the board. The 260,000 what we have is the next fiscal, three fiscal years. After that, the program will be back to where it is. So then we'll be reimbursing one-to-one to the counties to run with the program. But these three years is where the deficit is because of the two projects we approved at the RPA Board, so.
Did we make any, Chandra, this is Jay Wickham. Did we make any decisions related to how the program would be funded and/or applications received with the decrease in funding? So we're going to just do two or three projects or is that a county-by-county decision?
So we left that to the counties. Each county can decide how they want to do the program. Where we heard from all four county supervisors that this is a very, very good program. All the small cities are getting benefited. They see the value, but they also see that cities like Rickersville and Grand Mound, which are population 110,000 or 10 people or so, getting 250,000 is close to nothing for them. So they really see that those cities should get some kind of funding because they have projects that are going on right now. So it's more like there's no right answer here. Both sides are good with it. So then we left to each county engineer and the supervisors to decide how they want to run with the program, so.
Okay, thank you. Do, have you resolved that, Anthony, yourself, how we should handle our reduction in funding or?
Well, as far as like the number of applicants.
Yeah, so should we reduce it or, you know, say, hey, max project is smaller. It's either going to do smaller projects or fewer projects?
Yeah, you know, it's a hard question to answer because, you know, the the small cities projects are going increasing in cost too. You know, usually they try to look at like a little silk coat project or maybe like a overlay that we're trying to match funds with. You know, if we do like five, $5,000 projects, it doesn't really get you very far. That feeling says we should maybe narrow down to maybe two? Just an idea.
Two projects, but larger? Is that what you're suggesting?
Maybe half and half or maybe one that's like, say, you know, 15,000, the other one is 7,000. You know, it's, I guess you'd have to take a look at the list of projects that've come into and, and, you know, what what the sort of the importance of each project is. One might score just way better than anybody else and it may be that we just award that one project.
It's going to be difficult. There's no doubt about that. It's, you can't get much done for 15,000.
No.
It just.
Even when rewarding, you know, $25,000 grants, I mean, yeah, they they love the program, but that doesn't even take you very far these days either.
I recall and a memo from Ed, I think, indicating that as part of our purchase of services program, some of the small communities are asking for other things. The mayor's meeting had some discussion about the shortfalls of even the program, you know, we're talking about today because of rising costs and their needs. So maybe we see what's in the purchase of services to see if that tells us anymore about what they're actually applying for purchase of services for before we make a final decision today. Didn't that, didn't that end last week, the deadline to apply? It's this week? It's today? So that might help us if that's there, at least it's a.
So the, I think it's fair to note that the current round of RCTP applications coming in will not be impacted by this. So for this year's projects, they're fully funded. It's next year's that, you know, we'll start seeing this reduction.
Next couple of years.
Yeah.
Three years.
Three years, yeah. So we have about a year to kind of think through this process, think about how many applications we'd want to approve, any extra funding that we might want to throw at this, you know, we just, we've got a little bit of time to think about this.
To keep us informed on what Delaware County does, I guess. That would entertain thoughts of us funding it somewhat, bring it up to that previous level that the small cities can get some of their projects completed.
Yeah, and we've got time again, you know, we can look at it for the next budget. It's not something you have to amend into the current year's budget. So you've got a little bit of time to think about this.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chandra.
Thank you, Chandra.
Okay, well, from one set of good news to another, you want to go to the number two here?
Go ahead.
All right, so we compiled a list of all the projects we've bid out this year. There is one project that I actually I never put into the construction program, but I had thought about, but looking at how the prices were increasing, I kind of pulled it out. So I got to keep in mind that I had a four or five mile overlay project that I was going to insert in there as well. But seeing how the the prices were increasing so much, I prioritized that one out of there. So the deficit I'm going to talk about is is what's based on these projects, but the deficit would actually have been higher if I had bid that one out as well. So that kind of shows you that I had to actually, you know, pull out one of our projects to try to stay close to budget this year. So grand total projects, and this is everything, state funding, STBG funding and local projects. So we have two, two projects on the list there that are either federal aid or state funded. We have the Sundown Road paving project and we have the John Deere Bill Grant project. Those are federal or state funds plus all the other local projects. So grand total projects comes up to 23,915 or 916,000. So the estimate that we had on all those projects was 21,558,000. So our actual bid minus estimates in the whole, we are is about $2.3 million. That's all of the projects combined. If you see the the green highlighted area there, that's all the other projects less the FM account projects or the STBG projects. So all of our local projects, the actual bids came in at 16.5 million and the local, our budget amount was 15.7 million. So that shows a $771,000 deficit that that we'll need to amend up for. Again, if I had bid out that other project, it probably would have been closer to about $2 million deficit, I'm guessing. So this kind of shows you, you know, a year ago, we would have been under budget on everything.
Everything keeps going up.
Yep, and we we put, we put, you know, some, you know, some inflationary increases in our bid items, knowing that this stuff was coming and even that was still exceeded. I, I'm hoping things are stabilizing a little bit. The last couple of projects we've bid out, I expected them to be higher than they were and it looks like they came down a little bit. So maybe that's going to kind of shake out a little bit, but, you know, obviously the big, the big one that's, that's the unknown is the oil. You know, any asphalt type project is is just going to be so day-to-day when it comes to the pricing. So this is free information. You know, we're $771,000 short on on what we had estimated for this for this year. Yes.
Can you talk a little bit more about the project that you pulled out? What is the project? Who, what are the roads? Who's it impact?
Yeah. It was a, I think it was around a six mile project. I have to think about it. It was around the Bankston area. It was, I think, north, let's say, North Bankston, north. That's the east-west, north-south, east-west. It's kind of a horseshoe road around Bankston that I was looking at doing a just a nice mill and fill overlay just to try to maintain. That was the kind of one of these beginning projects that I want to kind of get into to try to maintain what we have instead of these major overlays. So it was going to be probably like an inch and a half mill, inch and a half overlay. And I'm, so I'm trying to cycle those types of projects in so we, every 15 years, we stay on top of those roads. That one had to get pulled out because of, you know, the price increasing. So that was the first one that had to go. The other ones are all priority. We have to get these done because they're either in poor shape or they're just priority projects we have to take care of.
For the 771,000, they have that in a budget or?
So we, cash flow wise, we're okay. So we can support it cash flow wise. Budget wise, we'll have to amend it. This is kind of a harbinger for, you know, coming years. You know, if this trend continues next year, we're going to be pulling out some projects, more projects. Old Highway is our primary project next year and that one's definitely going to go. There are some other, you know, projects that are pieced around that that might just have to be pulled out if we keep going this trend here. Because although our cash flow can support these types of projects this year, no way next year. We'll have to pull that back quite a bit.
So we know that the Iowa Senate is looking at the local option sales tax. And that did not, it doesn't look like it's going to pass at all this year, but it's, we've been told that it's coming and it's probably eventually going to happen. In Dubuque County, that extra of sales tax goes exclusively to roads.
Correct.
When you look at the shortfall, is there a way to say how much of that would have been funded had we received, was it a half split of the sales tax? Harley, do you remember?
Three eighths wasn't.
So the three A split?
Something like that.
Did you look at it from that lens, just as an example?
Yeah, did I throw another sheet in here?
It would cut down substantially on the amount that goes to the road fund for our county because if the state would have took it over, money that came back part would have to go to property tax reduction. And then whatever the other portion would go to whatever was designated by the citizens.
Right.
Well, that doesn't work for us because the whole one cent went into the road use tax, which is a property tax reduction because we're not taxing the property owners to build up our road fund.
Correct.
But it would definitely hurt Dubuque County.
This year, out of all these projects, about, it's about a 50-50 split for local option and secondary road funding. So out of the projects you see there, about half of those are local option funded.
And I looked at those balances, fund balances, they they vary. So between the two roads and local option sales tax, you're you're transitioning between a 12 million and a $1.6 million ending balance.
Correct.
So it's, it's, you've got a big swing in this fiscal year, this construction season. So you have a little play, but if you did your plan, you would draw significantly down the funds close to 1.6 ending fund balance, which would be historically low for us.
Yeah.
Which is good. You're putting the money to work. That's, that's the good news.
Well, a million and a half fund balances is the number I like to be at. That's about what I carry in Delaware County. It's, it's a good amount to, you know, let's say if you have a major flood event for the year, that's, or some other kind of disaster. That's, that's a good amount to draw funds down and not, not go below zero. And I do something called, I call, I call it, you have to ride the roller coaster through the year. You know, you have your two major property tax revenue increases for the year and then in between, you have to ride the roller coaster down because you just have your kind of normal road use tax funding per, per month. So you have to, have to have a certain amount of money to absorb those highs and lows for the year.
I think one of the things to, you know, focus on, both the public and the board, and certainly internally in your division, is that, you know, even this year, we're going to be doing 38 miles of roads in six structures. That's in addition to the last six years, doing another 25 to 30 miles of road every year and then another probably 70 structures.
Probably, yeah.
So, you know, we've been on a really good clip of drawing our fund balances down. And so the reverse would be even more difficult to handle where you had large fund balances and inflation was eating away at those. So we've put that money to work and really improved our infrastructure.
Yeah. Over the last five years, the money's had good power. It's bought us a lot of projects out there. Yeah, now, but now we're finally seeing the opposite side of it. It's, doesn't have as much of an impact.
But we want to keep a healthy fund balance account because when, there's no other way to absorb three quarters of a million dollars over budget because of inflationary costs. So depending upon how long, you know, the last five years, we didn't have that inflationary trend. That appears to be the new normal sadly. So, you know, that's, that's the fine tuning. We can't obviously spend it all and put it all to work because we need to have a savings account is what I think of it in terms of a day-to-day person.
I disagree.
Have to have that too.
You have to put that money to work or increased inflation will, will eat it up. So you, you need a sensible balance, which the county engineer just mentioned. But having high fund balances doesn't, all you're doing is collecting taxes and holding those. You have to put the money to work.
Well, yeah, and you get to a certain amount. It's, public's like, okay, what are you doing with this money? You know, you should be putting it to use. So, yeah, you get, you start to get up so high, you need, you need to make sure it's put to use and you're serving the taxpayers correctly. You know, in my mind, I know.
With that, Anthony, completely. You know, the question is really what, what allows you to do projects, not have to pull one off? We got six miles that we pulled off for this year for Bankston area and that's fine. I mean, I'm, I'm not complaining. It's a sad thing, but that's where we are with a very aggressive schedule. But we do, fiduciary responsibility is to be able to kind of, as you say, ride that roller coaster with enough cushion that you're not coming back to say the department's broke.
Correct, right.
Because that's a message nobody wants to hear.
No, I would never want to bring that to you. Yeah, I don't ever want to say, hey, we need to go to a bank for a loan to carry payroll or whatever like.
Yeah, well, the county is fine, but, you know, the roads projects come from their own budgetary.
Right. You know, in my mind, I've always known kind of what a bridge costs and what, what a road is per mile for cost. This is throwing it out the window. You know, this has completely changed what I, what I forecast in my mind, what something costs. So going into next year, it's, it's going to be total adjustments. You know, I, I, even next year, I have a pretty aggressive plan in the five-year construction program and I can almost guarantee you there's going to be at least one project that's going to be pulled from it.
And we may have to with the inflation. I mean, that's.
Yeah, I mean, everybody's going through this, you know, you have to.
We don't want to, but we're going to have to because money's not there and we do have to keep some balance.
Right.
I appreciate that you seem to continually monitor the priorities. What are the road conditions? As you say, this was a maintenance issue to try to get ahead of the curve of significant improvement. So I appreciate that and I think the taxpayers all do that you stay on, on top of the road condition so we can change what needs to be addressed in terms of priority setting.
True. Thank you, Anthony. Thank you. Did you want to go over my report real quick?
Yeah. Do you have a chair?
Okay, for projects currently we have going on, Old Farley Road, Rockville Road paving project. The culvert replacement subcontractor Stager is wrapping up work on the crossroad culverts. We are anticipating the asphalt paving beginning in a couple of weeks. And then over on Old Massey Road paving project, the culvert placement subcontractor Chick Frye is working on box culvert extensions right now. They'll also be working on culvert replacements and slope widening through the next few weeks. And then a sundown road paving project, Stager Construction is planning to start work once school gets out for the summer, so sometime early June. And then we had a pre-construction meeting with Taylor Construction on the two bridges at North Bankston Road and Hickory Valley Road. Plan is to start both of those either in June or July and kind of stagger them so they'll be a couple of weeks apart from each other. And that's about it for projects. We do have several contracts that are being approved. The John Deere Bill Grant is getting finalized for the contract. We have a couple on for today. I suspect we'll have some pre-construction meetings very shortly here for those projects in the next week or two. And then here comes the floodgates. Things are going to really open up, I think, pretty quick here.
So basically, once school lets out, things will get flying.
Yeah, if anybody has any traveling to do on Northwest Arterial, it's gonna, it's gonna be congested. Because I think the contractor is probably going to start there first and they're actually being directed to start right when school gets out for the John Deere Bill Grant project. And I don't, I'm not sure yet how they'll stagger that with our project, if they'll do it at the same time or if they'll try to kind of stagger it differently. We do have a completion date next November 2023. So they have that up until then to get ours done. So they may get some done this year and look into it next year. Just, we'll have to wait and see how they stagger that.
That's going to significantly change traffic flow. And have we tried to imagine how that would impact our other projects like the old highway road into next construction season, next year?
Yeah. Again, I need to have the pre-construction meeting to see how they're going to be doing this project. If they'll try to get a lot of it done this year, that will tell me about the old highway. Yeah, we'll just have to wait and see how that works out.
The Northwest Arterial portion, you had said there's some major reconstruction on some of the intersections, like Raspberry Road intersections.
Yep.
Definitely be an area that the public wants to avoid when that starts.
Yeah.
Imagine that. I mean, I'll probably come over cycle. Byway, right? So, you know, just thinking, trying to imagine what that, this summer too, obviously all those traffic patterns will be different.
Well, that's all, that's all I have today.
Give me anything further, Jay?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. What was that? All the board of supervisors in the session for the Monday, May 9th. All the board of supervisors in the session for the Monday, May ninth, two thousand twenty two board meeting. Start the meeting with public comments. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are on the agenda. Go to the podium, state your name and home address. Individuals wishing to comment on a public hearing will be given the opportunity during that respective hearing. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone in chambers that wishes to address the board? State your name and address, please.
My name's Ron Schweitzer, one three four nine zero, Marcella Court, Dubuque, Iowa. I'm addressing on the ATV UTB coordinates that we're guys are going to talk about today. I think the road routes have gone good this year so far, or the last almost three years, no incidents in that. I know people have made comments that they'd like to have longer hours, you know, to the trails, you know, where they could do stuff before it gets dark or even after hunting, you know, kind of messes up your hunt, too. You gotta leave all your hunting spot for deer hunting earlier before the hunting season's over, our time out for that day. We'd like to see maybe go twenty four seven on hours. I know a few people mentioned, too, that they'd like to see a few more roads opened up, the ones that are kind of landlocked into where they just because where they live at, you know, they can't get onto the roads on there. Other than that, I thank you very much for for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Caprice?
My name is Caprice Jones. I reside at four forty Klingenberg Terrace, Dubuque, Iowa. And I'd like to thank the board of supervisors, Jay Wilkum, Hardy Potoff, and Ann McDonough, as well as CJ May, the county attorney, and his office, and Sheriff Joe Kennedy, founder youth board, and staff, and special thanks to Sarah Cobble. This thanks is in line with gratitude towards Dubuque County for being in position to be the catalyst of a new day of corrections, offering rehabilitative services to those inmates who desire to want to change their mindsets. So I thank you all. It's the beginning of a new day.
Thank you, Caprice. Anyone else in chambers wishing to address the board? Do we have anyone on Zoom, Don, that wishes to address the board? None? Okay. Move forward. We have no proclamations for the meeting today. Next to be approval of minutes of the meeting of May second. Everyone have a chance to review the minutes.
Wish to approve.
I will second that.
Have motion of second to approve the minutes of May second meeting. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we move to consent items. We have a class BB beer permit for Eppworth Sportsman's Gun Club and a class LC liquor license for Dubuque Driving Range.
I will make a motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
Motion of second to approve the consent items. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go to procurement procedures. There are no procurements for this meeting. Public hearings, a proof of publication for the public hearing for today.
Motion approved, but notice probably or proof of publication.
I will second that.
Have a motion of second to approve the proof of publication. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we'll go to zoning case, ZC, hash mark zero four dash one three dash two two, Farber Family Revocable Trust, Allen Marine Farber, A one agricultural to A two agricultural residential. Tammy?
Good morning, everybody. The applicants are requesting rezone from A one agricultural to A two agricultural residential, one point nine five acres to allow for the construction of a new home, to be able to continue to assist in the farming operation. This property is located four point three zero miles west of the city of Cascade along Goose Hill Road and is legally described as the northeast of the northeast, section thirty one, T eighty seven north, R two W Cascade Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. The property is owned by Faber Family Revocable Trust, all Al and Marine Faber as trustees. Zoning in the area includes A one agricultural to the north, south, east, and west. They are requesting to put up on a home on a forty acre park so that currently has an existing home on it. They are requesting to do this to preserve the crop round. They will plat off the new home site area and create it its own lot. There are no previous rezoning cases attached to this property. There are no special use permits attached to this property. Five letters were sent to the property owners. Comprehensive plan, chapter nine, agricultural natural resources, page one thirty four, objective three point one, and chapter eight, housing, page one twenty two, objective twelve point seven may apply to this case. And this case was approved six to zero in favor by the zoning board. Is this not working? Sorry.
Hold it down a little bit. Thank you.
Okay, so this is the location where they're going to be putting the new home. And with the way that we have set up the A two agreements, they are locking up the balance of this parcel and another parcel of land for non buildable. So basically, there is two homes going to be on an area of eighty acres total, which is what we do all the time.
Okay. So the they're going to share the driveway, then?
Yep, they'll share the driveway. They'll share the well.
Okay. Any questions for Tammy?
Nope.
Dan, any questions?
Just comment. I thought the meeting, people were asking really good questions at this only board meeting. I know you have a change in who's on your board, but I thought that I I really appreciated that sitting out in the Zoom room. So, thank you. Motion to open the public hearing.
I will second that motion.
Have a motion of second to approve the rezoning. All in favor, signify by aye.
Open the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion of second to open the public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Do we have anyone wishing to address the board regarding the rezoning? Anyone in chambers? Anyone on?
Motion to close public hearing.
I will second that.
Motion of second to close the public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Motion to approve the rezoning.
I will second that.
Have a motion to approve the rezoning. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Motion to suspend the requirement that this amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
I will second that.
Have a motion of second to suspend requirements. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Motion to, motion that the amendment be adopted and that the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map and that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
I will second that motion.
Have a motion of second that the amendment be adopted. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Here he is. Move forward. Next, we have zoning case, hash mark zero four dash one four dash two two, Clarence and Florence Kennicker Trust, A one agricultural to A two agricultural residential. Tammy?
The applicants are requesting rezone from A one agricultural to A two agricultural residential, one point nine four acres to allow for the construction of a new home for their granddaughter so she can continue to assist in the family farming operation. This property is located point six eight miles southwest of the city of Burkittsville along Route three and is legally described as the southwest of the northeast, section twenty six, T ninety north, R one W Concord Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. The property is owned by Kennicker Family Trust. Zoning in the area includes A one agricultural to the north, the south, the east, and the west. There are no previous rezoning cases attached to this property. There's no special use permits attached to this property. Nine letters were sent to the property owners and the city of Burkittsville was notified. Comprehensive plan, chapter nine, agriculture natural resources, page one thirty four, objective three point one, and chapter eight, housing, page one twenty two, objective twelve point seven may apply to this case. So this is a case where the granddaughter is going to be building up on the property and eventually the granddaughter is in line to inherit the rest of the farm. So they're helping the grand, the the family farm now, and they just need to get closer to it.
Dan, do you have anything?
I will make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion of second to open the public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are in public hearing. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to address the board regarding this rezoning? Seeing no one in chambers. Do we have anyone online?
Yes, this is Dave Schneider, Schneider Land Surveying, nine oh six First Street North, Farley, Iowa. I guess I'm here to answer any questions you may have related to this, but Tammy was pretty much correct in stating that Keishen or brother are ultimately the future owners of this property when it transfers from their grandmother's trust. Her brother currently crops the ground, and the only way she can really be there to assist him is if she's closer. And her grandmother's also looking for assistance who who lives on the farm at this point, and, you know, and does not plan on leaving at this point until they make her, I guess. So, yeah, if you have any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer that.
Here's we have no questions. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public on Zoom?
I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion of second to close the public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 I will make a motion to approve the rezoning.
Second.
Have a motion of second to approve the rezoning. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Make a motion to suspend the requirement that this amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
Second.
Have a motion of second to suspend requirements. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 I'll make a motion that the amendment be adopted and the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map and that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
Second.
Have a motion of second to let the amendment be adopted. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Here he is. Next, we go to zoning case, hash mark zero four dash one five dash two two, John P. Taylor Declaration of Trust dated eight twenty three, two thousand thirteen, Etall and Barbara A. Declaration of Trust dated eight twenty three thirteen, A one agricultural to A two agricultural residential. Tammy?
The applicants are requesting rezone from A one agricultural to A two agricultural residential, four point three nine six acres to allow for a lot line adjustment. This property is located two point one nine miles north of the city of Holy Cross along Hydershire Road and is legally described as lot one of the northwest and lot two of the northwest, all in section six, T ninety north, R one W Concord Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. This property is owned by John P. Taylor Declaration of Trust dated eight twenty three of two thousand thirteen at all, and Barbara A. Taylor Declaration of Trust dated eight twenty three of two thousand thirteen. Zoning in the area includes A one agricultural to the south, the east, and the west. The property owners plan to sell this lot to a family member in the future. There are no previous rezoning cases attached to this property, and there are no special use permits attached to this property. Six letters were sent to the property owners. Comprehensive plan, chapter nine, agriculture natural resources, page one thirty four, objective three point one, and chapter eight, housing, page one twenty two, objective twelve point seven may apply to this case. This is pretty self explanatory. And as you can see on the drawing there, they're just trying to redo the lot lines, and this will be sold to a family member in the future, and it will stay in agricultural use.
They're just lining off the building.
Yep, they're lining off the home and the building area. It it actually has its own lot. They're expanding the lot to get in those structures into it.
Motion open the public hearing.
I will second that.
Have a motion of second to open public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. We are in public hearing. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to address the board regarding the rezoning requests? Seeing no one in chambers. Do we have anyone on Zoom, Don?
Yes, this is Dave Schneider again, Schneider Land Surveying, nine oh six First Street North, Farley, Iowa. Yes, they Tammy's correct in the fact that there is an existing parcel out there was was created back in the eighties when John and Barb initially bought that farm. And basically, the only reason that we're doing this, or the main reason that we're doing this, is because over the years since the eighties, they've they've kind of expanded on their houseyard with the windbreak and and that sort of thing on the west side of the property. We're basically, all we're doing is adjusting the west line of the property sixty two feet further west to include all the windbreak and driveway that that needs to go with the house when at some point they transfer it to their daughter, which is the intent. And when we come back and plat this, we're also going to be platting along Holy Cross, or excuse me, along Hydershire Road, because the intent would be she her their daughter would receive everything south of the road. So, but that that'll go through the simple plat process because of the size of the acreage on it. You have any other questions? I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Motion to close public hearing.
I will second that.
Have a motion of second to close the public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Rezoning.
I will second that motion.
Have a motion of second to approve the rezoning. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Motion to suspend the requirement that this amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
I will second that motion.
Have a motion of second to suspend requirements. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Motion that the amendment be adopted and that the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map and that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and the portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspaper as required by law.
I will second that motion.
Have a motion of second that the amendment be adopted. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. That carries. Next, we go to zoning case, hash mark zero four dash one six dash two two, Spring Valley Investments slash Michael Frederick PC Plan Complex to amended PC Plan Complex.
Okay. The applicant's request for rezone from PC Plan Complex to amended PC Plan Complex, a half an acre to be allowed to build a fifty by ninety storage building for additional storage for the mobile home park. This property is located five point one one miles southeast of the city of Dubuque along Route fifty two south and is legally described as lot two, Spring Valley Edition number two, and lot two of the northwest of the northwest, the north and east of Highway fifty two, section twenty six, T eighty eight north, R three E, Mosalem Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. The property is owned by Spring Valley Investments. Zoning in the area includes A one agricultural to the south, PC Plan Complex to the north, R one rural residential to the east and to the west. There are two rezoning cases attached to this property. On zoning case number nine thousand one of seventy eight, that was to allow and subdivide and sell residential lots in a private development compatible with the present mobile home park. And on zoning case number zero eight nineteen of seventeen, it was to amend the current PC Plan Complex to allow for additional addition of mini storage units with indoor and outdoor storage. The storage units have not yet been built. There are no special use permits attached to the property, and ninety five letters were sent to the property owners. Comprehensive plan, chapter twelve, land use, page one eighty, objective nine point one, and nine point five may apply to this case. So as you can see in that drawing up there, he is trying to build a storage unit for all of the equipment that he uses at the park. He was approved before for personal storage units for rental, so that would not be the same, and that has not gone away. He has not built them, and he has even expressed that he doesn't know if they ever will get built. But this is the reason he has to amend this is because anytime when you have a PC and you make a change, he had to come in and ask for this amendment. And this is strictly for storage for the things for the mobile home park.
So it has it has to do with the actual structure of the shed, not necessarily the lines of the zoning?
So it is the line, it is it is the zoning. So he in this piece of area where he is at, that is part of his PC Plan Complex that he was approved in seventy eight for. So that or in seventy eight, I don't know if my going did at the time. But then there was another amendment that was done, and that would have been done in seventeen. And that was because at the lower part of the park, he was going to build some storage units. He was approved for it. He's never built those. And in the interim, he's come in and said, you know, I just have too much junk sitting around out here, too many high expensive pieces of equipment that I don't want exposed. And then because he's asking for any kind of a new structure in this, he has to ask for that.
So any new structure and plan complexes have to
Correct.
Come to us?
Yes, correct. And and I will inform you that we are going to be starting as of next week, starting to have conversation with the zoning board to to look at this to, to look at this PC, uh, you know, uh, plan complex district stuff and start having a conversation about, you know, what they want to change, if they need to change things and how they want to address some of the PC things. And again, there's only been a history, in the history of the county seventeen PCs. Most of them were done in the seventies and the eighties.
I just find it, uh, not sure exactly the word, but, uh, we're here discussing just, uh, a storage shed on private property within the existing zoning. Right. But just because they're adding a new structure, we have to reapprove the zoning?
Right. So anytime in the, it's because of the PC. You're not approving, you're approving an amendment to his original plan.
Sure.
That's what you're looking at. So his original plan did not include this structure. So anybody who would have a PC, if they're going to add a new structure to that and it wasn't part of the new plan or part of their plan when they asked for it, they would have to come back in.
Sounds good.
So really because the, the, the plan complex is for, um, manufactured housing, right? That's the purpose of it. That's what we see here. And so the new, it, the new request is for a storage building. It's not the same and inside plan complexes should be same same. It wasn't there, so it's kind of slow steady. It's, I don't think there's going to be any problems, but I think that's kind of the idea that, you know, it's not exactly what was originally described and it sounds like it's going to be a great amenity.
Well, and then like, so you'll remember when we did the, the, the nuns, there's several little, at that time, they approved several little housing areas that you approved. When they come in to build those and get the permits for them, they won't be back in front of you. It's only if they're going out of that plan.
Sounds good. I will make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, open the public hearing. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are in public hearing. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to address the board regarding the rezoning? Seeing no one in chambers, do we have anyone online?
I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Is Mr. Frederick here? And that's you, sir?
Yes.
I, I just wanted to say that I truly appreciate that you haven't started construction. So thank you for pausing enough to come and get this done the correct way. I, I appreciate that.
Or motion?
I did not forget any other comments. I will make a motion to approve the rezoning.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to approve the rezoning. All in favor signify by aye.
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 I'll make a motion to suspend the requirement that this amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to suspend requirements. All in favor signify by aye.
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 I will make a motion that this amendment be adopted and the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map and that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
Second.
Have a motion, a second that the amendment be adopted. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Here's, thank you, Michael. Next we'll move to approval of Platts, a resolution to approve the final plat of Albrecht Farm Subdivision. Tammy?
Okay. The property is owned by David and Susan Albrecht and is adjacent to the city of Cheryl along Circle Ridge Road with a toll of twenty-nine point five five one acre survey. The property is owned A-one agricultural and R-two single family residential on zoning case number zero three zero nine of twenty-two. The purpose of this plant is for the construction of a new home. The survey creates two lots. Lot one is a total of twenty-eight point four four one acres surveyed with a home and farm buildings and it remain in current ownership and agricultural use. Lot two is a total of one point one one zero acres surveyed and it will be sold for the construction of a new home. Lot one will use an existing and a residential entrance off of Circle Ridge Road and lot two will use an approved residential entrance permit number twenty-two dash zero nine off of Circle Ridge Road. There were no additions or corrections required for this plat. There are no mortgages on the property and all of the signatures are current. This plat's been reviewed by myself as Platts officer. I have, has all the required signatures. I respectfully recommend an approval. So this was a rezoning that you had just done and this is the plat falling off to create that acre of land for that single family home.
Motion to approve the plat.
I will second that.
Have a motion, a second to approve the final plat of Albrecht Farm Subdivision. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Here's, next we'll move to the action items. Thank you, Tammy. Next we move to the action items. Have a resolution to approve the hiring of deputies assistants and clerks. Believe there is just one, uh, position on that.
I'll make a motion to approve the hiring request.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to approve the hiring of deputies assistants and clerks. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next we have a resolution to approve the necessary documents with stagger construction for the RCB culverts, new single box, HMA resurfacing on Thunder Road, project LOST dash two three parentheses two dash seven three three one.
Motion to approve the resolution.
I will second that.
Have a motion, a second to approve the resolution. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next we have a resolution to approve the necessary documents with Keter Equipment Company for covert replacements on various roads. Project L dash C two three parentheses one zero one dash seven three dash three one.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution for Keter Equipment Company.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to approve the necessary documents with Keter. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next we have a resolution to approve the necessary documents with Mathi Construction Doing Businesses River City Paving for the HMA resurfacing and covert replacements on Flanagan Road and James Road. Project LFM dash P two three parentheses zero five dash seven X dash three one.
Move approval of the resolution.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next we have a resolution to authorize a chairperson to sign a professional service agreement with Shive Hattery for HVAC consultation. Believe that was for a total of thirteen thousand nine hundred dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for Shive Hattery.
Um, second, just with a note if I might.
Go ahead.
So I noticed that the contract says if they come and deliver their report in person, it's an extra fee. I just found that odd. They're in Cedar Rapids.
I did not see that on there.
I mean, I probably pretty standard, but just thought it was noteworthy. So we're going to get a written report.
Most consultants charge for travel and expenses in the contract.
They have a motion, a second to approve the resolution.
Maybe one other comment.
Oh, sorry.
Our local consultants, I brought that up in our work session, so we didn't, uh, want to express any further and the board wanted to move forward with Shive Hattery, so I don't know if that's a separate consideration to resume done. You have any second thoughts about Shive Hattery or?
I think our, I think it was pretty clear from the conversation we had last week that Shive Hattery is who we're going to go with. I just found that to be noteworthy, that that's what happens when you, when you aren't working with local. For them to come and actually present this, I'd imagine even by Zoom, they would want an extra fee, so.
Chris isn't here, so I guess.
I stand with my second of the motion.
Further discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement, Shive Hattery. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next we have a resolution to approve the necessary documents with Tri-City Electric Company for courtroom number three audio vid, audio video system project.
Move approval of the resolution.
I will second that.
Have a motion, a second to approve the resolution. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next we have a resolution to approve the allocation of project funds for the Bell Tower Productions from the county's ARP-A dash LL SL FRF allocation.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for Bell, Bell Tower Productions.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to approve the resolution for Bell Power, Bell Tower Productions. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next we have a resolution to approve the allocation of project funds for the Dubuque Dream Center from the county ARP funds.
Motion to approve the resolution.
And I will second that motion.
Have a motion, a second to approve the allocation of funds for Dubuque Dream Center. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next we have a resolution to approve the allocation of project funds for the Dubuque County Energy District from the county ARP-A funds.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the Dubuque County Energy District.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to approve the allocation of funds to Dubuque County Energy District. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next we have a resolution to approve the allocation of project funds for the Fountain of Youth from the county's ARP funds.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
And I will second that.
Have a motion, a second to approve the allocation of project funds for the Fountain of Youth. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next we have a resolution to approve the allocation of project funds for Dubuque area labor harvest from the county's ARP funds.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the Dubuque area labor harvest.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to approve the allocation of funds to the Dubuque area labor harvest. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next we have a resolution to approve the allocation of project funds for Travel Dubuque from the county's ARP-A funds. I would recommend tabling this. We have a presentation from Travel Dubuque.
Table. Move to table.
I'll make a motion to table until our nine forty-five presentation. I'll second that motion. Is that what we're?
Yeah, she made the motion, second. Have a motion, a second to table that resolution. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next we have re, re, resolution to recommend to the ECR that, uh, Community Foundation of Greater Dubuque Fund ten contract be amended.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
And I will second that.
Have a motion, a second to approve the resolution. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next we go to communications. Have the city Dubuque Resolution to amend and restate the urban renewal plan for the Great Downtown Urban Renewal District version twenty-two-two dot three.
I will make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to receive and file, uh, urban renewal district version. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next we have a manure management plan, Demmer Family Farms LLC hash tag six six seven three one. Manure management plan for Circle Ridge Holsteins hash mark seven zero six six six. And a third manure management plan from Scott Stephens Meyer, hash mark seven one two six seven.
Note, there's no changes to any of those. I make a motion to receive and file.
I will second that motion.
Have a motion, a second to receive and file the manure management plans. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next we go to open vacancies for information only. Next we have personnel requisitions. We have then for a motion to approve the personnel requisition for a full-time clerk for in the health department. This was tabled last week.
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
I will second that.
Have a motion, a second to approve the personnel requisition for the full-time clerk in the health department. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next a motion to approve the personnel requisition for a permanent full-time assistant county attorney grade two. That is due to a resignation.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel requisition.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to approve the permanent full-time assistant county attorney. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next we have a motion to approve the personnel requisition for a permanent full time park ranger. I believe that is also due to, uh, resignation. I believe, uh, one of the park rangers took a position somewhere else.
Motion to approve.
I will second that.
Have a motion, a second to approve the personnel requisition for a permanent full-time park ranger. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next we have a motion to approve the personnel requisition for a temporary full-time trail crew member. That is with the conservation commission just filling spots.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel requisition for the crew leader.
Second.
Just for the crew member.
Crew member, excuse me.
Have a motion and a second to approve the personnel requisition for the temporary full-time trail crew member. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next we have a motion to approve the personnel requisition for a temporary full-time trail crew leader.
Move to approve.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the temporary full-time trail crew leader. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which which are of concern to that person and which are not agenda items. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Please be aware that the board is limited in their ability to respond to such inquiries as I will co-prohibits the board from deliberating or acting on items not appearing on the agenda. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to address the board? Seeing no one in chambers, do we have anyone on Zoom?
Just, just to, a, a point of clarification, I was asked by this, by a person attending. Do you plan to allow public comment, um, related to, uh, UTV and or travel to Dubuque during those sessions?
Uh, probably not on travel to Dubuque. That's just an ARP application.
Okay. What about related to the?
The UTV, uh, figured on letting comment.
Okay, thank you.
What did you decide? Because we're going to set it for public hearing, I thought. Aren't we setting this for public hearing? It wasn't an action today, but we've seen that.
I think on the, uh, UTV thing, there was, uh, one for twenty.
So did the chair decide you're going to allow public comment today or you're?
I was going to allow some comment today just to see where, where majority stood. Brief comments. Not a long discussion, just brief comments. To be fair to everyone. We are at.
Do we have public comments on Zoom or not? I will make motion to recess till nine forty-five?
Second.
Have a motion, a second to recess till nine forty-five. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. We are in recess till nine forty-five.
There you go. Travel Dubuque, this is our mission statement, leading tourism destination promotion. And development to enhance and expand the Dubuque area experience. We do this on a daily basis, as you know. Um, you know, I've got amazing staff. We've got very solid partners. A lot of them are here today. And throughout the entire county, throughout the entire region, to really shape and mold and market Dubuque and Dubuque County. As a premier destination, not only in the state of Iowa, but throughout the entire Midwest. And that continues to evolve a significant. Do you want, next slide, please? Travel-related expenditure, this is kind of the holy grail for us. So this is the, this is throughout the entire county. You can see once again what I referenced early on about the port of Dubuque. You can see just the amount of money that's. Spent in the county each year. And then we hit twenty twenty with COVID. And we all know what happened. Everything came to a standstill. But you can see how much, you know, the, how the, the tourism industry is such a huge economic development tool. For the entire county and the region. So that's what brings me here today. Coming out of COVID and, and such, and how dramatically that affected everyone, you know? Probably our industry was decimated the most by it. I talk about this all the time. My staff is probably tired of me saying this. In our industry, you have to have the ability to travel and to gather. During COVID, we couldn't do that. Now we're seeing that rebound significantly. And if, and the next slide, if you would please, Don, momentum. You know, that's a key for anything, any industry, any community is have just an absolutely positive to momentum. And last year, what happened at the field? Next slide, please. We've got the Field of Dreams, when I talked early on about the, about the port and what that did to our area. The field itself has been, as many of you know, the major destination since nineteen eighty-nine. For the entire region, the entire county. Estimated over three hundred thousand visitors were there last year. And I love this quote from the movie Terrence Mann portrayed by James Earl Jones. People will come, and they do, they have. Since nineteen eighty-nine, when the first couple drove down the driveway from New York. Came to Don Lancy's farm and wanted to just go out on the ball diamond and play catch. It has become a icon, an iconic spot, not only for the United States, but throughout the entire world. I love that picture too. That's a little girl in two thousand and nineteen when we did the Team of Dreams event at the site. And that's a replica jersey of the Rockford Peaches from a league of their own. And we had the ladies that portrayed some of the, the ball players were there that day. It was great. This gives you an idea, when we reference that three hundred thousand people, this is, gives you an idea of where people are coming from. You can see it's absolutely staggering. Obviously, the Midwest component with Dane County, which Madison, Milwaukee, Chicago. Des Moines, Cedar Rapids, all those areas, Omaha, but just throughout the entire United States. It is interesting for me, being an older gentleman, being involved in this industry a long time, it's always been a. A task for us to be able to track where our guests come from. Now with the cell phones and the ability for people to ping them and such, our analytics, we can really gauge where people are coming from. So you can see. It's absolutely significant and such. And this continues to grow every year, but just the amount of people that come in. I, you know, we talk about our proximity a lot also, where we're located, you know, with the major metro areas with an easy driving distance. That helps us significantly, but we continue to evolve as a community, as a county, as a premier destination. You'll hear me reference that a lot. Obviously, I have already, but, Don, please. When I talked about momentum, you know, we talked about everything. This game kind of put it in, kind of put the cherry on top of the cake. Um, many of us had the opportunity to be there last year or saw it on television. I, what that game did for not only our area, our region, but our state. That was a four-hour infomercial on how amazing it is to be living in Dubuque County in, in Iowa. And everything turned out, you couldn't describe it any better. That sunset, I like to take credit for that if you saw it. We, but it was absolutely gorgeous. I've had the opportunity since the game to be on three national webinars. With the Major League Baseball and with the gentleman from the Chicago White Sox. And the gentleman from Chicago White Sox has said two, two. Two times on the webinars that, and he's been, he was involved in two thousand and five when the White Sox won the World Series. He said. That was the best environment that they've ever, ever been at. He said, and we would love to come back. So just taking that, taking that momentum from that game and just, next slide, please. Even with this, I thought Kevin Costner's quote was perfect. Today is a tradition. Who wouldn't want to play here? That really summarizes it. I mean, not only from a professional baseball standpoint, but across the board. I mean, from everyone, who wouldn't want to play in that environment with that corn, with that rural atmosphere and such. But you can see in the amount of people, once again, those analytics that we showcase, you know, it was just, it's amazing. The exposure that that, that field, that event and everything gives our entire region. Next slide, please. Just a little bit of a recap, once again, on that New York Yankee, Chicago White Sox game. It was the most, most watched regular season game of any, on any networks since two thousand and five. Just about six million visitors saw that beautiful Dubuque County, that beautiful rural area and such. And then the, the diamond itself, the ball, uh, that was constructed around it was named the ballpark of the year. Which was quite an honor for Major League Baseball. Next slide. This is, uh, as taken from above by drone. This is the Field of Dreams site many of us are very familiar with. Um, I've been blessed to be involved with the site since nineteen eighty-nine, since when the first people came down. In a variety of different ways, everywhere from organizing the baseball team that still performs out there thirty-some years later. I did a pair back in those days, hard to believe, and also managed pretty much every event that has been there on site and also managing the field. And been blessed to be a big part of last year's activities with M L B and really looking forward to this year's. Next slide, please. This is a complex that was, uh. The momentum from the game once again was amazing. And we were lucky enough to have an amazing group come in. Um, headed by Hall of Famer Frank Thomas, Dan Evans, and their partners Rick Hyner. And they were able to, um. To take, uh, their, the controlling interest in the Field of Dreams. They announced this about three weeks ago with the youth complex and the other. Uh, items that they're going to be bringing online at the field over the next few years. And just that investment, that eighty million dollars of private investment. And what that will do, not only for the field, but our entire region, the amount of people, the recognition and everything that that will bring in. Working with all of that, we saw a real need, next slide, please, Don. To grow on that, to grow on the momentum, to grow on all the interests that was generated by that game last year. At the actual baseball diamond that was created for that. To give you a little bit of an update. So what happens with that is the diamond itself is permanent. The, the baseball diamond, the fencing around it, the lights and such. What Major League Baseball comes in each year, like they did in twenty when the game got canceled, but they did in twenty-one. They'll do again in twenty-two, and they build that structure around it. They build the, the stands, they build the concessions, the restrooms. The clubhouses and such, that's all temporary, okay? So when they leave, they tear that all down and such. But we've had significant interest across the board, across the nation, across the world. For individuals, teams that want to play at that site. Catching with us, trying to capture this, all the momentum, and with this unique opportunity we, we feel that we're in right now. We put together a nonprofit organization that's called This is Iowa Ballpark Incorporated. And we are trying to get the funds together to build a permanent world-class, multipurpose facility there. That what we would be able to utilize basically when the weather permits, hopefully April through October into November. And really become on a year-round destination for a variety of different organizations from anywhere. And I'll show that later on in the presentation. But this is what we're here for today, to make an absolutely generational change on the western side of the county. A lifetime, uh, changing that, um, structure that we'll be able to utilize and bring business. And quality of life for people throughout the entire region, throughout the entire nation, really throughout the entire world. But you can see this, I, I won't read through it, but you can see in regards to the nonprofit, it's going to be a combination of. Public and private entities, and the governing bodies will have a huge part of that. To be able to see the oversight of the construction of the stadium and then the management of the stadium. So, next slide, please. Kind of gives, the, the, no problem. If, yeah. There you go. So this kind of gives you a breakdown is This is Iowa Ballpark Incorporated. And they will own the stadium structure, the nonprofit will. They will lease the ground from Go the Distance Baseball, the, the organization that owns, manages the Field of Dreams, a long-term lease. And then we will work with Go the Distance for them to manage the day-to-day operations. But once again, the nonprofit. Will oversee the facility and such. Yeah, so, okay. Next slide, please. This gives you a glimpse, this is a rendering of what we're looking to create. And this has, what we're looking to create will be three thousand permanent seats. This has, if you look to the right side, the bleachers down the left field line. That would be if there was a professional base, baseball, or could be a concert, could be whatever there, they would, you. Whoever the promoter would bring in the additional five thousand seats. So that's, this shows you a total of eight thousand. What we're looking to create is the three thousand seats with the suites, with the, uh, uh, permanent clubhouses and all that. Restrooms, concessions, all handicap, all A D A accessible and such. So, as you can see, it's the, the setting is absolutely beautiful. And keeping with the, I'll show you on another slide, kind of gives you the whole Iowa feel to it. So, next slide, please. I talked about the year-round destination. That's incredibly important for us because we want to be able to utilize and the demand is going to be there for. Individuals, groups, um, meetings to be there on a yearly basis. This is a suite that we're looking to potentially build. That you can see it overlooks the entire field, overlooks the Field of Dreams and the corn and everything. This would be the type of, uh, opportunity, for instance, that if we would have a meeting there in January. You'd be able to look over that beautiful white landscape and see everything and such. So. That's very key for the group that we're, been an organization, is to make this a year-long destination. We feel, if you want to go to the next slide, please. I love this slide. I referenced this as the back of the stadium. My wife says it's the front. Agree to disagree, but this is the Iowa plaza. And you can see when I referenced early on, keeping with the, our agriculture heritage, this does. We can see the corn on top of the stadium, the corn leading into the stadium. The slats that are up top are like you would see on an old corn trip out in the country if you're driving down a rural road. I love the plaza in the front. It's got the state of Iowa there to really showcase once again. The, uh, the banners hanging up down the one line would be all the former Major League ballplayers from Iowa, like Red. The, the banners hanging up down the one line would be all the former Major League ballplayers from Iowa, like Red Faber. Like a Mike Bodiker, like various others to really highlight and showcase, this is Iowa. This is when you come there, I don't care if you're from Chicago, New York, if you're from Japan or wherever. You're coming and you're showcasing Dubuque County, you're showcasing Iowa, you're showcasing our rural heritage. I really feel this is what this does. I really feel that's what that game, honestly, when I got involved with the field 33, 34 years ago. It was that pride of where that field was built. I was born and raised half a mile from here, still live there with my wife and my family and such. My family have been there since the 1860s. It was that pride in showcasing where I live to the world. That's why I got involved with that. That's why I've been involved with it for so long. I think this stadium, this ability, working with Go the Distance, takes that to an even higher level. It showcases our county, our area across the world. And we can be doing this for 20, 25, 30 years, bringing people in from all over the world. To really see what Dubuque County is about, what farming is all about. When they see their, my nephew's planting all the corn out there. They have for over 10 years and such. The biggest prop at the Field of Dreams is the corn. It just is. The difference last year with those, I've been, I've been doing it forever. The players walking out of that cornfield, I've worked with over 40 some Hall of Famers through my career out there. People like George Brett, people like Lou Brock, people like Reggie Jackson. The awe that they see, that they experience coming, these are the guys, as many of us know, have played on the biggest stages in the world. In the biggest times and the awe that they have coming out of that corn. That was replicated again last year when that, the professional players walked out of that cornfield. We can do this on a yearly basis and just showcase what Dubuque County, what rural, what Dyersville. What the state of Iowa is to millions of people. Next slide, please. Once again, a year-round destination, this gives you a little bit of a breakdown in regards to what, and the interest is there. I'm a ready fielding phone calls. Tyler from my staff's a ready fielding phone calls. Dan Evans is here from Go the Distance, a ready fielding, significant phone calls in regards to the interest of wanting to play on that diamond. And just how we can take that and expand it. Imagine Cascade playing Beckman High School on that diamond. Or Dubuque Hampstead playing Western Dubuque on that diamond. And that experience that those kids are going to have and their families and such. Or the University of Us hosting a collegiate baseball conference out there. Bringing all those people in from around the, the country, around the world and such. Holding, like I said early on, a meeting there in the winter up in that, that suite area and the guests looking out over the, the. I think beautiful landscape that time of the year, but just once again, that opportunity, that unique opportunity that we have right now. So I, I, I think that's really a key component of this. We're not building this for one event a year. We're building this for multiple, multiple events that people throughout the county, throughout the region, throughout the nation, throughout the world. Have the opportunity to take advantage of. Next slide, please. The impact, we have done significant, we've worked with, next slide, please. We've worked with sports facility company out of Florida, that, that, one of the top companies in the nation that do these feasibility studies. Just the stadium alone in direct spending, and this doesn't, this does, would not include construction and such. There's over $10 million a year that's going to be going into our local economy. Next slide, please. Combine, combine with the, what Go the Distance is looking, that $80 million investment that they're making into our county. Our region combined between those two on a yearly basis in direct spending. You're looking at an over $32 million a year in direct spending that we going into our local economy. Next slide, please. Once again, with the over $80 million in private investment. And then 250 additional jobs that'll be supported throughout the entire region. That's just not on site, that's out through the entire region when we'll need more people in restaurants. We'll need all of their businesses that would be created or already existing that will help supplement and help. Every, all the activity that's going to be taking place throughout that. Next slide, please. This really does continue to put Dubuque County on a world-class stage. We saw it last year. I'm not coming with a proposal that, you know, this is like, hey, we hope this would happen. We saw it firsthand. We saw it across the board. I know, I probably feel that more emails, phone calls, text messages from people that live all over the world. That are from Iowa and said, I have never been more proud to be an Iowan than I was from that experience last night. Like I mentioned early on, that put us showcased Iowa, showcased Dubuque County, showcased rural. Our, our way of life really on an international scale. We have the ability with this potential project to do that on a yearly, almost on a daily basis. Next slide, please. So, let's build a legacy. I mean, that's really what we're here for today. It's a legacy for all of us. You know, we've done an amazing job throughout all this timeframe. We've done an amazing job that the Field of Dreams is still there. You have to be honest. How many movie sites, 33, 34 years later, are still that much in the public eye? The Field of Dreams is referenced almost on a daily basis. It's a part of our, our American culture. It really is. If you build it, they will come. Go the distance, ease their pain. You see it all the time. What we're doing with this, what all of us are doing with this is continued to build that legacy. So I appreciate it very much. Appreciate all the support, not only for, you know, this potential project. But throughout what you all do for all of us, not only my industry, but for all of us in the county. It's not an easy job. Appreciate all the time that you put into it and such. And I have now opened up for questions from the, from the board.
Thank you, Keith. Jay, you wish to start?
Thank you. You had me at Field of Dreams. So, not any specific questions, but maybe, maybe some comments related to the project. I've been lifelong Dubuque County resident, so like many people are nostalgic and, and know about people that were in the movie. And how it was created and the different areas that were, that were used. And so, and a baseball guy, it's, you know, what's not to love? But when I kind of look at my supervisor hat and then business hat, I see a lot of good things. And so I certainly see that it's proven and I, I would agree with you on that. So this isn't, hey, maybe we're going to try to do a Major League game and a few others. We've actually accomplished that. And we have significant evidence that this has dramatic appeal and, and upsides. So, so proven is a big, big part for me. The next piece that I really like is the partnerships. So you've got, I've got many of my colleagues from Travel Dubuque here, representing the communities. I'm proud to serve on that, that board. And the partnerships between Travel Dubuque, between the other government entities of City Dubuque, City of Dyersville. Dubuque County hopefully, and, and the state of Iowa already has skin in the game. And hopefully we'll have more with our renewed application. So I, I love, I love that partnership that is just here. And I should, should say certainly the professionalism on the partnership too, with Dan Evans and, and his, his group. Bringing the professionalism of how to run a Major League event is, is tremendous. And then lastly, which is the hardest part for me to, to get my arms around, but I've, I've done it over the years, is the future. So many times you, you want to have your eight-year-old be the eight-year-old playing Little League in the little hometown field. But you know, they're going to grow up and they've got aspirations and you want to, you want the future to be as bright and big as possible. And so I am, I'm very excited about the one economic opportunities that this brings to all of Dubuque County. And very much I'm a supporter. So I appreciate you and, and all the group that, including Jackie and the city of Dyersville. Has a, you know, a large stake in this over the last 30 years to, to get it to this point. So look very much forward to being a positive person and hopefully being a, a component for this success.
I have to say, I thought your question Supervisor Wickham was going to be what mine is, when are the Cardinals time?
That is a great question.
I thought that was definitely going to be the answer.
Could modify the resolution. You know, we have a little position right now.
That's for a little pressure.
Cup man in the middle, of course.
From the THB, Supervisors Agree, St. Louis Cardinals Should Play.
Cardinals Dodgers, right?
My, my word choice actually would be that, about generations. So, and this is the opportunity to use federal funding from the Biden administration. We have worked on this and I have listened to you Keith for years before the federal funding. How can we do this? We have to do it. This is the time, the momentum, all of those things. All of it is timed for this. So why this size of a gift? Because it's for the generations. So Saturday, we had a family wedding. All throughout Dubuque County, Rick had spelled the marriage down to Worthington for the reception, people from out of town. And the question is, why? Who wouldn't want to be a leader, to use Kevin Costner's words, who wouldn't want to be the leader? That says yes to this proposal. So my 90-year-old uncle, my 85-year-old dad, baseball people from Dubuque County, born and raised. They're like, Anne, it's for the generations. So reaching back to a 90-year-old saying unlimited fixed income. Yes, do this. It's for all the future generations. So when we're looking for something to point to, to say, what did we do with the Biden administration rescue funds? We helped bring the Field of Dreams, the stadium here. That's the best we can do. You've shown tremendous ability to move all these pieces, Keith, you and Jackie and team. So joining with you, I'm, I'm happy to do so. And I'm pleased that I have this opportunity and that it's from the federal government. That even makes it into me more powerful.
Thank you.
Keith, I am very impressed with your presentation. This is the gift that's going to keep giving into the future. I mean, this isn't a one and done. This is going to affect our economy for years to come. The economic impact is unbelievable and it's just going to keep getting better. I truly appreciate what you and Jackie and everybody have done to get this to this stage. Very supportive of it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is it time to step back and look at the resolution that we had tabled previously? Are we at that moment?
We could bring the resolution back up. Resolution to approve the funding request from. Travel Dubuque in the amount of $5 million for the ARP funds for the Major League Baseball stadium.
Well, definitely we are, are largest to date with American Rescue Funds. And so for a little context, you do have 9.4 million, but roughly we'll be receiving about $19 million, the county will, from American Rescue Funds. And from my understanding, the state of Iowa already has contributed over 11 million for water and sewer. And they do look for additional commitments from the state of Iowa, City of Dyersville, City of Dubuque and Travel Dubuque as well. So it won't be Dubuque County that is, is alone in this venture. So it is a large dollar amount, but I, I think it's the right one.
And, and also in the conversations that have happened over the many months, probably in excess of a year of the requests. From the governor and from economic development, Debbie Durnum. That the gift from the city, from the county, from our federal funds, our rescue money going to tourism needs to be significant. And so whether we lead, the governor has been leading and it's important for us to join. So Jay, do you want to make the motion on behalf of the?
Yes, I will make a motion to approve $5 million to the Travel Dubuque entity for the Major League Baseball park. At the Field of Dreams using the American Rescue Plan Act funds.
Round a second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the allocation of. Federal funds to Travel Dubuque for the Major League Baseball park in the amount of $5 million. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution carries. Congratulations, Kevin. Good luck on the transition, Supervisor Wickham. Okay, next we will move to the next work session, the Old Highway Road Middle Mile Concept Discussion. That would be with Anthony and Nathan.
For how we follow this up, and we'll give it a shot.
Any kind of ba, baseball acronym?
Had me at fiber optic cable.
See Anthony get up and everybody bails again.
Yeah, I know. It's like, I see how important we are here. Um, all I could say is that maybe this project might have some influence on the east-west corridor traffic towards the Field of Dreams. So we might have a role to play in this, but, um, so I'm going to start off with just stating. Our department's perspective on this project and then I'll, I'll turn it over to Nathan here. But so Old Highway Road from Farley all the way over to Siple Road is our primary project next year. It is, it is our priority one project that we're going to, we're going to focus all of our attention to. It includes resurfacing the entire stretch, doing culvert replacements, doing some safety widening in some areas. And replacing the bridge over the railroad tracks at just west of Siple Road. So it's, it's going to be a major project for us. Obviously it's going to be a, a major traffic issue as well, a lot of detouring going on and, you know, but. I'm excited about this project. It's, it's a once in 25-year type project, you know, and we've been gearing up for this for a few years now. At the same rate, it's a, it's a great opportunity to kind of segue into Nathan's world. There's no really better project that we're going to have that's going to really connect the county from east to west all in one shot. You know, it's rare that we see something this, this long that also impacts, you know, several cities, several towns. And it, it could play a really great role in, in connecting east to west. And then maybe being, you know, sort of that main corridor to branch off of in the future. So with that, that's what we have planned for next year for road construction. And I'm going to kind of turn it over to Nathan to talk about his part here.
Good morning. Good morning, Supervisors. So I'd like to do a very condensed, brief recap of what I did back in January. It comes down to digital equity. Digital equity is the cornerstone challenge that occurred during COVID. It was glaringly obvious, those that could do remote learning, that could do remote healthcare, do remote work. And have premium, premium entertainment when you're stuck at home. This is a giant swing at the pitch of, I know, I'm going to do as many baseball puns as I can. So it's a giant swing at the pitch. It's to try to start leveling the playing field. The, what Middle Mile is not, okay, let me just be very clear. Middle Mile is not about government competing with private sector. It's not about competing with internet providers. Middle Mile is about government building generational infrastructure. That will level the playing field and allow governments, private sectors, nonprofits, healthcare, schools. To leverage that infrastructure. We build roads, let's build digital roads too. And let's try to get some digital equity through a major population center of Dubuque County. We have Centralia, Eppworth, Farley, potentially even Dyersville if we take it that far to the west here. This is the concept, joining with the resurfacing project of Old Highway Road. And potentially to take it all the way to Dyersville. NACO in their broadband task force has mentioned how important it is for governments to invest in infrastructure. Conduit and fiber is infrastructure. Since that report was released 10 months ago, there's been multiple additional conferences since then. And the consensus has just been driving home time and time again. That it's governments that need to invest in the big connect. in the big connection points between these anchor institutions and then I bring in the private sector to get that last mile. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Don. Can um, go to anchor institutions, please. Yep. Anchor institutions are the backbone of what middle mile is actually aiming for. Generally speaking, anchor institutions is where the people live. That's where the population centers are. This would be designed with stakeholders, with everybody that wants to get into the tent with us. So we bump up against any anchor institution, regardless of what it is. It could be a clinic, it could be a hospital, it could be a library. It doesn't matter. Anchor institution is anything that generally speaking doesn't move and has value to the people. We would get this near them, Western Dubuque, anywhere out in the county. So is this new? Is this radical? No, it's not. Is it new to Eastern Iowa? I think so. So Dubuque County could lead on this in the eastern side of the state if you choose to go down this path. As an example though, can you go to the next slide, please? So Lancaster, Nebraska. Since I first proposed this last year, June, July 21, when I had private meetings with you and then the formal presented, formal submissions in September and January. There are multiple counties that are now going down this path. I chose this one because this is really fresh. This RFP just ended about, I don't know, three, four weeks ago. Lancaster, Nebraska. We are not quite set up. We are way more spread out. But in their context, they're using what they want to do. They are connecting all of their anchor institutions. And they are surrounding the city of Lincoln and then tying this middle mile conduit system into the existing Lincoln conduit system. Ours would be a similar premise. Some of these cities have their own conduit systems in place. Some of them are more advanced than others. We would work with them and figure out where does it make sense to have meet points. So this is being done right now across the county, across the country. And it is my hope that the board of supervisors recognizes the value to also do something similar in a version that would make sense for Dubuque County. I'm not necessarily asking for this commitment today, but you need to have an idea of what we're talking about cost wise. So if this, you know, dies here or scaled back or scaled up. All of this was originally designed and vetted with the original strings that were tied to ARPA. So the, obviously since then, they were loosened about three, four months ago. But all of this can still come from the restricted bucket, which I believe is around nine million. So if you're looking for stuff that will fit in that bucket, all of this will work from that. A lot of this is engineering. For this first go around, if this is chosen to be done, we do need to hire a professional engineering firm to help us get started on this and do this design. Phase two, phase three, I've had conversations with Anthony that potentially they could do some of this engineering in-house after we get our feet wet and get experienced in this sort of design. But for this stage, this is what we'd be looking at. It's about 30 miles tip to tip. It would connect to the southwest arterial conduit system. It would connect from there, West Campus. And depending where we want to coordinate and cooperate with Dyersville, we'd probably bring it all the way to Dyersville City Hall. So west, east-west 30 miles. And then of course tie it into the city kind of city of Dubuque conduit system. In, you know, wherever partnership that would make sense for them. So what are we asking for today? So working with GDDC, they have done an exercise with the city of Dubuque to help them develop a master asset list. I would like to build something similar, but county wide. And GDDC can assist with this. They just need a formal request from the board for them to engage at that level of time commitment. There's no monetary cost to this. It's just you have to formally ask them. A county wide asset list is in pretty good shape. I've been building that for the last year and a half. We're, I'm pretty happy with it. We need to refresh it, but it's pretty good. But what I don't have is an asset list of all the other cities. City Dubuque is in great shape. They just finished that exercise, but Farley's, even Holy Cross, even the ones that we're not necessarily talking about this right now. Let's get a list. So we can get on a map and start putting thumbnails in it to see what does this look like? Phase two, phase three, phase four, even when we're not talking the east-west. I would like permission to start building the big tent. Go to the internet providers, go to the city clerks, go to the mayors, hospitals, school districts. Start talking to everyone about what this concept is. Explain the value, explain the reasons and get their knowledge. Get their either positive or negative responses and get them to participate, whether that's knowledge, whether that's informational, whether that's monetary, start getting this tent built and get as many people on this train as we possibly can. And then I would like to formally request the board that, yeah, let's come back with formal documents to start taking this from a concept to something that can actually be acted on and built. Because we do have a time crunch here that ideally this is professionally designed, built and is part of the bid documents that will be let when Anthony does his surfacing project. Some of this could be broken out if we go all the way to Dyersville, but ideally we get as much with his project as is reasonable. So ideally we would have this ready to ship by December of 2022.
Start doing.
Yeah, I, I, I think generally I'm really supportive of the concept. What I don't know, and I think definitely supportive of your, your big tent philosophy and going out to the, the cities, going out to the, the governments, other healthcare providers, educational NICCs of the world, and certainly the consumers as well. Cause what I need to understand is what is that demand? I know generally other people, you know, faster, better, but what is the true demand? Most people have internet today and it may be at acceptable levels. There are players throughout the county that are out there currently and they're providing a basic level service and some would say an advanced level service. But what is the demand for fiber that will allow it to jump further than, you know, potentially 100 megs per second and just really make the difference. And so that, that's the question I'm looking for. Is what is that demand from the business community, from the governments, and then from those other community stakeholders?
It's my concern, Piazza Farley, I believe already have fiber. I guess what, what can we do to improve that if they already have it?
Reasonable question. In this instance, it will be to help promote additional competition. Remote work is the future. Remote work is here to stay. Hybrid work is here to stay. If they have fiber currently, we will potentially go near their anchor institutions. And their second and third internet fiber to the home internet providers would then have a path to at least have competition brought into that area. Some cities are in better shape than others and that's part of the GDDC, help us understand assets, help us understand the demand equation.
Right. That's what I need to know. What, what is the demand for it? Have you applied for any of the infrastructure bill grantship?
B is not out yet, which is what you're referring to. We're going to take a swing at the pitch. The challenge is it filters through the states and Dubuque County, unfortunately with their maps, we may or may not even be eligible to apply. I did a lot of time on something called reconnect, a tremendous amount of time actually, and it ended up that, no, after talking to our DC reps, it wasn't going to work for us. We would ourselves had to be the internet provider, which is not something Dubuque County is ready to take on.
Well, how do we get any revenue back out of this? I guess, do we get, is there an opportunity for us to get some of the funding back because they're using our conduit?
So the goal would be to try to offset some of the management costs going forward and that is achievable. The way it would work is we'll potentially put in a seven-way conduit. We, the county, to connect our assets and any partners that may want to work with us directly, that's would be appropriate. We would use one duct, potentially save a duct for the future unknown state maybe. And then the other five, we would lease to any qualified partner. That could be a hospital, it could be an internet provider, anyone. We would want to try to work it to where the rates are similar to our partners, not saying they have to be identical, but they would need to be similar to help private sector, you know, not get tripped over having to jump from one entity's conduit system to another. That would generate some revenue to offset maintenance costs going forward. Realistically, I don't see this paying for itself in full, even over, you know, 50 years. If that is a requirement, that's not going to happen. And after consulting with GDDC, probably not either. This is infrastructure that supports generational change throughout the county.
Your initial request was for like 3.5 million for this, as I recall from.
No, it was about seven and a half million.
For 26 miles, it was three and a half million, I believe.
Carrick's Trail was about three million.
Right. That's 26 miles. This is 30, so. Can't think of it more than double for four miles more.
This is not using the trail any longer. The trail would be far cheaper. I mean, it's a trail. We don't have to close roads. It's just simpler. This would be going through cities, which is much more expensive. This is, I don't want to over promise, but this is using the high-end linear foot cost.
This also for, I can interject, this is for the county to pay to go through the city of Eppworth.
Correct.
Go through the city of Farley.
Yes. This is assuming no cities partner with us monetarily to own or have a stake in this. This is if we just went straight through, did the permitting process, of course, and rolled our own and then potentially leased it back to the city, if that's how they want to go. And some cities may want to do both. Some cities may want to lease it directly from us. They don't want to be involved with the design and owning of it. Some may want to have an ownership in it, in which case that financial equation would have to evolve.
Do you have other questions? My questions really relate to the potential for, for other funding, you know, and I read the, the NACO newspaper that comes to us bi-weekly and broadband is everywhere, counties and cities as part of this recovery money are doing this work and there's many millions, if not billions more from the federal level. I don't, what I've kind of reconciled in my mind is that I want that, some of that funding.
Yep.
But you can't do it if we're not ready to take first steps, right?
Agreed. So I have a, a, a list. I mean, this has been my life for about a year and a half now of all these various buckets and they do exist. The challenge is we have to have a plan and we have to have something that's actionable if we're going to have any hope of being awarded any funds. That, that's just the way these things are scored, the way they're done. There's 42 billion in the infrastructure bill. Again, that goes to the states. But if we have a plan and we have commitment, we're going to score higher. Through the NTSB, there's going to be a billion dollars just for middle mile. Like it's, it is literally for middle mile. We're not going to have a swing at that pitch unless we actually have something to submit with engineering plans and actual things that we are doing. And we need this grant to make this better, make this larger, service more people, service more miles. I'm, I'm just being blunt. I've, they score these things and we can't just expect them to give us this without having any of our own skin or any of our own action in the game.
Seems really important to me that it's a connector. It's the east-west, right? So it's, if we're going to do this, th- this is the time. We're going to have our major connector road or one of them, at least one that we get to control, right? Anthony's gonna let it and it's going to go out and we're going to completely do it. And we're not going back for 25 years. So if we want to have that, use a road as a connector, this is the time to do that. That's kind of how I've landed. And it is some of if we build it, will they come, right? We can't, we get, if we're, until we're on the map, we're not on the map. So to me, I saw very much Harley that the request is less. It's getting to where I don't know you can trim anymore. I personally, because I think again, it's generational, it's infrastructure that will stand for many generations. Being a partner with our county cities. I think we need to be there. I, I don't think this is going to be a mistake. I think it's a direction to go. And our, our dollars are dwindling, dwindling, right? As we make our cuts. And so over the weekend, you know, I, I'm scratching like, how does this fit for other priorities and what other would be, but I think this is an important project. And we always knew there wasn't going to be sufficient funding for. So you go big on Field of Dreams. We all knew that that was required. Think we got to be in on this kind of broadband scope. It's what the rescue funds call out directly for tourism broadband. And I know many times I'm on meetings with folks and they're by phone because their internet's not quite good enough. I live in Asbury. I frequently use county's hotspot, you know, again, just trying to build in the best resources you can. And I'm not saying that directly relates to the conduit question, but I, I mean, I've got my engineer and my IT director standing there. So I gotta, I don't know better and I, I, I think it's valuable for even our, some of our last dollars.
Don, could you go back to the ask slide, please?
Nathan, can you tell me whether you think that this would, I mean, I've talked, you know, informally with mayors as best I can. They all seem to think that this is, not all those that I have visited with think this is a good thing that would help their community. Is there a potential for it to be a budget return for them? Might they gain revenue from being able to use our conduit as we go by?
So yes, the, the challenge will be how long you want to measure that return on. And since we're government, we're not going anywhere. Measuring it over five, 10, 15, 20 years is reasonable. When we do the asset list, again, I know I'm sound like a broken record, but we go to anchor institutions. And they will have locations like we do, that they are currently paying somebody for the connectivity. When you design this sort of system, part of that design is to save money over the years. So you're using not, I mean, not free fiber because you have the cost upfront, but like you're not cutting a check every month to Centralia to connect your fire department to your police station or whatever those anchor institutions are. You know, we can use a real simple example with the libraries, the Dubuque County libraries. Currently they pay, there's five libraries. They have five internet pipes, five firewalls, five Currently, they pay, there's five libraries. They have five internet pipes, five firewalls, five of everything. Is this gonna connect all five of them? No, not yet. I mean, talk, revisit this five years from now, but. If you even have two of them near this, you eliminate one. Because now that is part of their network and this scales up to anything, any kind of city network, anything. So when we do this, they, I have absolute confidence that they will be talking to their city engineers. And whoever is their technology counterparts. Okay, so we're coming this way. We're doing conduit. Where else do we need to hook up? Do we wanna like throw that in with this build and then do a change order or what whatever the concept will be with that? So yes, there will be returns. It's just measured in a longer time span because we're not going anywhere. They'll be cutting the check forever unless they get their own fiber to connect their locations.
That's what I would really like to focus on in the plan. So I see your last request is to create a plan. So I think we all can envision uh and write the check for this pipeline along Highway twenty. Cause we do roads and, you know, we know what that looks like, but what does it look like when it branches off into Piosta and who does it serve? And what is that value? And then when it's in Eppworth and it goes to the north and south and a few other subdivisions. Who does it serve and what are the benefits? And then just keep going down the line. That's, that's what I'm in looking for.
Serve and what are the benefits? We can do that. The value. We can take a stab at it, but some of that's gonna be subjective, so.
Agreed, to Supervisor Pottos' point. So, you know, I can call my brother who lives in Birds Acres and say, hey, uh what are you doing? Are you watching TV? You're streaming? And you'll go, yeah, I'm watching the Cardinals on DirecTV stream. Well, how does that work? Well, we have MediaCom and that delivers a service that allows me to watch that game. Um in same service that allows his kids uh to to do homework. Um and so. What's the value add now that it runs through Piosta that he can have? This new system. What is that value add and when will he switch? And then when will examples, I'll play Mighty M switch, when will Divine Word switch, when will NICC switch, when we build this? Is it the first year or ten years from now? That's what I'm I'm trying to gain an interest on, on the demand side.
I will take a swing at that and we'll see. I.
Yeah, it's not gonna be. We can help you with that, too. We've got, we've got connections into the the local governments and Greater Dubu potentially could help.
Yeah, GDC is gonna.
They have outreach.
But they might need a filter through GDDC.
That comes down to cost.
Yeah, exactly.
What's MediaCom cost compared to what's this gonna, is this gonna be higher than what medium, MediaCom cost? Well. Your brother ain't gonna switch, but it's gonna cost him more to go to this.
Unless it's faster, quicker.
I'm gonna, so I'm gonna put my nerd hat on here. Fiber is the only technology that's going to scale for the next fifty, sixty, seventy years, okay? And I I don't make declarative statements in this chamber. I will make that declarative statement. Fiber is the only technology that is going to scale.
Agreed. So my question, is it one year, ten years?
The thing being, a dollar is still a dollar, is still a dollar. So if this costs me twenty dollars and this costs me ten. And I get about the same thing, maybe this one isn't quite as fast, but it costs me half as much, I'll probably do it. That's what I'm talking about, is value. If it's relatively the same comparative and I'm getting faster service, yes, I'll go to that, but. At what point is the extra speed not really feasible for my wallet?
Today.
And what it might also.
Five years from now.
Yeah.
It lets the city build out infrastructure and then they achieve a cost reduction. And they have better amenities for the next employer that comes, right? So what you, what you see is your. This investment by the county with, again, federal administration funds. Your property taxes, we're providing that amenity and the infrastructure that goes out so that they're not trying to do that. And maybe there's gonna be, you know, an opportunity for them to capitalize on that by having some local employer. Or a a provider of some other type want to use that network. Maybe it's for them to decide inside their city. Their town, if it's return on investment. But if they're not in the, they're not in the game, if they're, if it's not available. Then that option's not for them. Worthington can't do this by themselves. They can't ever muster the ability to bring this to them. In a way that isn't competitive. They might enter into an agreement with a provider that is. You know, then you're controlled by that provider and whatever iteration those people become. But that's what I see. This is that equality issue. Though for me, it is great value.
And I'll just put one last point. I'll circle this back around. So we have Field of Dreams, obviously, big economic, awesome. Covid has upended the professional working environment. If you're an engineer, you're a software developer, if you're an HR specialist. Remote work is here to stay. Hybrid work is here to stay. The businesses that are fighting against that and are swinging back, like this is, every day I have listservs of. Corporations and job openings. I love Apple. Apple is bundling this horribly. They are forcing their people to come back and they are shedding engineers and software developers at a rate that no company is shutting. Then you flip that around, you have Airbnb two weeks ago announcing, this is it, no more changes. This is the final word. If you wanna work remote, you can work remote. We don't care where you live. We don't care where your zip code is. We're not gonna change your salary based on your zip code. That can exist in Dubu County. Dubu County is awesome. Our conservation is amazing. We're gonna have a ballpark, like it. It is a good place for people who wanna buy five acres and put a house in the center. And still make six figures being a software developer for Airbnb. It's doable. But in my opinion, government needs to take an active role in stimulating and promoting broadband throughout the county. We're not gonna become our own internet provider. We're not gonna become the last mile. What we can do is build middle mile to get these big anchor institutions, these cities, get this constructed. And in my opinion, this is an excellent first swing at the pitch doing that.
What do you feel and think? You've heard some of my requests of, you know, timeframe and understand the demand from the business side, the education, the community side. Is that gonna take you three weeks next year?
Well, I, my, my question.
And I like the construction with this, so you know, when, when do you wanna be back or when, when do you think you can have many of these questions answered?
I would propose we'll be back in two weeks with at least some of the questions. Like, we're gonna move as fast as we can because this is, we're under a time crunch here if we're gonna work with Anthony.
Okay, let me just add a little bit to that. So right now, we're planning on bidding out the bridge on Old Highway and the the road itself altogether. Um it's a, it'd be a foreign market project, so we, we need to have final plans in by like December to get into a marsh letting. And that's the the timeframe I'd like to be at. If we felt this was an extremely important project to couple with this and we, but we need to take some time to develop this. I'm okay with doing Division One, Division Two over a couple of years, say the bridge next year and then the the road project the following year. That would be kind of the worst case scenario for me. Um but at the same time, I still wanna try to make it priority that we do this altogether. Um but the, the biggest question is how quickly can we move on the uh analysis of this and the design work to get this all fitted together?
You wouldn't let this project out and you wouldn't have your designs done until when? Fall, winter?
We would, we're working on designs right now, so um check plans I think are due around uh November-ish. So final plans would be around December.
So we still have summer to fall.
Yeah.
To flush this out. And so I think it's ample time. I don't think we're gonna discover anything. I don't think there's anything undiscoverable. You know, outside of the next three months related to this project.
Some of it could be, you know, if if we get with the partners and we, we think we need to have more communication time with the cities and um the providers and whatever. You know, that's kind of the unknown, I, maybe even in your world, that's kind of the known, but um hopefully we can get on this quickly and and flush this out and. And uh get this to be a part of our project.
Yeah, I'm good.
Well, I guess I wanna ask my, my colleagues. If this is an important project, then I think we need to put a stake in the funding and we need to be willing to say. That we are going to assign federal funds to this. So that we're holding that funding back and in reserve and not. Funding other projects that take us over nineteen million dollars. That's how I would, I would like this to be through the federal funding that we do this. And if we don't come to some consensus that we're gonna reserve, you know, five million dollars to do that or five point five. Then are we telling Anthony and Nathan to go forward with whatever is left? I mean, don't we need to kind of make a commitment to them?
I I definitely agree with you on the American Rescue Fund, so I would like to see federal funds used for this project. What I would like is a plan and that's what you're asking permission to do is let me get out to the community and say, I need to gather some information and talk to you. Cause we're creating a plan to to approve this. I am not ready to carve out or allocate funds at this moment. I need a plan. I need to know that the entities that I mentioned, and then we didn't even talk about the service providers, I've got four of them listed right here, that they're in. And I need them in either two weeks or a month to be standing there with you saying, yeah, this is, this has value. That's what I need.
I wasn't gonna have all your questions in two weeks. I just meant, we're gonna come back with some stuff in two weeks.
Agreed, but that, that's what I need. I need, I need that plan and I need to know that this will have a return on investment. Not in ten years or twenty years, probably closer to three, not a hundred percent, but that will have usage. I have no interest in doing what we did with the Southwest Arterial. We paid for fiber, sitting there, it's not even connected. I do not want that to happen on this large amount, so it has to be utilized. Therefore, we've got to get to the demand side. We've got to get to the businesses, the communities, the, you know, the, the educational entities. To make sure those say, yeah, you build it, we'll hook up.
Alright, but Anne's portion is. We still have to earmark funds if we're gonna use ARP funds. Cause we are going to be discussing that again today.
Agreed, I'm just saying, I'm not ready to earmark them now. I want the plan. You're still in proposal mode.
I'm not saying we're giving it. I'm just saying that, hey, okay, we have five million that may be spoken for, for infrastructure here. Let's not. Go over what.
I'm not there yet, so I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm not ready to commit a dollar to this. I voted against the other fiber on Southwest Arterial for that very same reason. And so I see no value in investing in fiber that nobody wants. Tell me they want it and, you know, prove to me that demand side and I will help with that. And I think, you know, and I'm confident if the technology's there and uh, you know, our rationale to say, here's what's there. We'll get the internet providers, we'll get the cities, we'll get the education and we'll get some of the consumers to say, yeah, this sounds like a really good idea. Right now, it's just you two, which is great, but I need to hear from that, that other side.
Supervisor Pott, you and I voted for the Southwest Arterial. It's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think, for all-time access.
Forever access.
Forever access to uh conduit along the Southwest Arterial. And I would take that vote again today. And this is, this is a piece to move toward that. Supervisor Wickham, I do listen to you because I know you have great expertise in this area. But my return on investment isn't the same as yours and it's probably because I don't understand it as well as you do. So for me, it is, is it infrastructure and I see those maps that the governor sends out and we're not in her funding plan? This is us going alone. I don't see how we get bigger dollars to build this out unless we start. So whether that's the five point five or whether it's some other number, but I don't have to have the whole run. To know that I need to be in the game and I'm done using those baseball.
I mean, don't get me wrong, I'm, I'm supportive of this and I think and feel that there'll be a demand there and the public will benefit. What I'm asking is, where are they? Where are their comments? Where are the connections? And so, you know, I know, I lived in Piosta when MediaCom came out there. MediaCom came out and they actually cut up my invisible fence for my dog, you know, so that's why I remember it. And they, they put, you know, they put their cable connections to each home and they did that because they, one. Wanted to service that area and provide better internet and or better TV viewing. And so I get it. Um but where are those internet providers? What, how big and robust are, are their eyes related to this project? And then the communities and all those things. So um I just wanna hear that and uh, you know, and and study it, you know, we can, we can look at. The numbers are easy to manage. You know, if you look at the greater Piosta area, you've got maybe three thousand people there with the unincorporated subdivisions. What's your adoption rate? You got three hundred businesses between, you know, Piosta, Eppworth, Farley, maybe a few more, a few less. What's gonna there be their adoption rate? If they all say a hundred percent, that's easy. If you get it, well, I'm okay right now, then we might wanna ask ourselves, is this the best place to put five million?
I hear you. My asks are not for five and a half million today. Permission to start talking to people because I don't, we have not had that until, well, we still don't have it, so.
So are we in agreement that the answer to those questions are yes?
Yes, I.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. So, yeah, so we, we were jumping ahead already, digging, writing checks, so.
I'm, I'm good. But no, this is, this is what I'm, this is what I need today.
And let us know how we can help you too, okay? We don't wanna just throw it over here. We, we all work with the local governments, we all work with education, the business.
I'll be reaching out.
Yeah.
I don't even know.
Say we can help you gain some of that feedback.
So um the formal request to GDDC would need to come from the Board of Sueps. So.
I'm happy to do that.
They know exactly what's coming. It's just they can't come for me.
Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Anthony. Next, we will move forward to uh work session uh regarding the ATV, UTV ordinance. Believe that entailed a public hearing being set. For uh May sixteenth. It's two options on that.
I think that's gonna need a motion for us to set the public hearing. Mary's nodding her head.
Well, there's two separate, uh, you could go two different ways on it, if I can find it here, I'm sorry. Believe one was to set the public hearing to just uh delete the uh. Sunset date, which would uh. Our ordinance would continue on under the current guidelines. Waiting to see if the state takes action. The second one would be, we would amend the ordinance, uh any amendments and go through that process. It's a. Quickest route would be, or the easiest route would be to just remove the uh sunset clause. And if the state for some reason does not take action, we can make amendments to the ordinance at any time. So would you like to proceed?
I, I would be looking for amendments. Um so I certainly would wanna hear uh from the additional uh user, the groups. And uh see what they, they feel and think. We've heard some of those comments. I've received some of them, we probably have as well. Related to time operation and or potentially other roads. And so uh slight modifications. That's what I would be looking to do.
Okay, and that could be done either way. I mean, we could do that before. But then we'd be, if the state takes it over, well, then a lot of it would be for naught, but. And I, I mean, I have no issue going either way with it if we wanna do amendments for the times or. Open some roads that were closed or whatever. We just have a timeline that we have to follow. We just have a timeline that we have to follow, that we have to get things completed by.
I don't understand what your question is. Is it a question?
It's whichever way my colleagues want to proceed with it. If we want to. Uh, make amendments to it and. Or if we just wanna. Go with the, uh, publicly, oh, excuse me, public hearing for. March twenty third at nine AM and that would just be the amendment to include the removal of the sunset clause. That would just extend it. Waiting for the state to come out, whether the state's gonna take action or not.
I think I just point this out for whatever purpose this is. I, you know, again, big family wedding this weekend and lots of family members who y'all know, who ride. And I said, yeah, for sure that sunset clause is gonna go away. And they're like, awesome. And I said, I don't know if we're talking about the same thing. Removing the sunset clause means something to us differently than it means to somebody who rides. Right now they have to be off by sunset, right?
Okay, five AM to sunset, the time of operation.
Exactly. So then the conversation got a little more. We needed another beer, so, but yeah, so there's two things. One is. I think we have strong consensus to absolutely not let this expire.
Right.
It's got to continue. That's easy. We can do that real fast under the time, public notice, we're done and we're done. Other things like the times to ride. And roads, I think we do need to have a broader discussion about that. I don't know if that can all be done. On this timeline. To beat the end date. So maybe we do the easy thing. Remove the termination clause so it moves forward and then go about our business, getting the language correct. For what changes need to be made.
Right, and that just. Keeps us in line for if the state does take action on it.
Aye.
I don't know, it's sitting at the Senate now and. It's on the calendar, but doesn't really mean anything.
I think they're both easy. So I think we can agree potentially. Um, on a compromise of a new time. That's what the clubs are asking us. That's what the users are asking for us. Um, I think we potentially could agree on one or two changes in roads. Uh. It was very difficult the first time. Didn't have to be, but it was. Um, and we got through that process. So I, I, I would, I would ask my, my colleagues to entertain the changes that. And presented to, and if you're not familiar with it, they can state those. And so an extension of the hours and potentially modification of one or two roads. That's the only modifications I'm, I'm looking for, and that's the only modifications I've really heard from the group. And, and I think we, if we look back. You know, there were some concerns and so we intentionally, you know. Put, uh, the ability to, to discuss this, which we are today. But I think generally speaking, uh, it's been well received. And, uh, we've had good fortune. And so we'd like to, I'd like to continue that.
As I said, I can go either way on it. Um. I don't think it would take a lot of extra meeting time to discuss, uh. Couple amendments.
It's not just a couple of amendments because changing the time is a significant amendment, right? So now people are driving by your home. On a machine. At one in the morning, two in the morning, five in the morning. I, I do think you, we should visit with the sheriff. Ian, I've already talked about that. I think that there's gonna be some folks who aren't in the room yet today. Who think that's a big change. That's not a minor change or an easy change. They're gonna want to be heard on that. So we want to make sure that the process allows those people. To be engaged in the conversation as well. You know, we're not gonna send out a deputy for a loud noise. At four in the morning.
That, that is what the public hearing is for, is for these people to. Discuss their issues.
And then the other people we need to make sure we have in the table at stakeholders is that. The people behind us, when we make a change. There are other people who will change. Several of the cities have ordinances that mirror ours. They will have to go through their process, likely consult their legal counsel. And if the state is going to make different changes. Then we're all going back through this again and again, and, and likely they do hire legal counsel to do that. So there's some.
That would be the advantage of just removing the sunset clause and to see if the state takes action.
The sunset clause is.
Not the hours.
Correct. We, we all agree. We want to continue it. So that, that should absolutely happen. We need to do the public hearing and get ready to do that.
Just go that way with removing the sunset clause. By another month, we're gonna know if the state's gonna take action. Or if they don't, okay. We can make the amendments to the ordinance at any day of the week we want. That's not an issue.
So I would be happy to make the motion to set the public hearing to. Amend the ordinance so that the provision that it terminates June thirtieth is removed. That's the notice of public hearing that I'd like to go up.
Discussion on that or motion, Jay, or?
I'm unclear, so I won't be seconding it.
Okay, this would be just a motion to remove the sunset clause. And set that for the public hearing on May twenty third at nine AM. Sunset clause meaning, meaning the end date of the ordinance. Which would keep us in the timeline and we can make ordinance changes at any time after that. This would just. Set it for the May twenty third, nine AM, removing that sunset clause. That way. If we don't. Come to consensus on the amendments, we still have this set.
I won't, I won't be seconding that at this moment.
Okay, I will second that.
I do have some discussion. Okay, thank you. Um, so. What I would be looking to do is have a public hearing and. Have one, the continuation of the ordinance go. Uh, but two, have discussion, and I don't think we're clear yet, but have discussion on other components of the ordinance. That being the, the time of operation and the routes.
Right, and we can amend that at any time.
I would prefer to amend that now and talk about it now and resolve it now. That's me not, both today's meeting and or.
You can't do that right now. We have to have a public meeting. This is a public meeting that will remove.
Maybe not, maybe not resolve. Yeah, I understand how the process works, but at least have dialogue here where we either agree or come to an agreement. And what I'm fearing, let me rephrase this. What, what appears we're gonna do is just approve the ordinance as is. Continue it.
We're continuing it. Waiting to see what the state's gonna do.
I hear you. I just don't agree with that.
We stick all this in and the state passes it and.
It's the all this in is what, all I'm asking is for what I've heard from the public and the riders. Um, is change in hours of operation.
Right, and I have no, I have no issues with that.
Can we add that into the motion? That we will change hours of operation and change routes in addition to changing what's called the sunset date. That's what I would, that would, that's what I'm looking for.
That's not my motion.
Right, I know that. I'm just looking at what the other one was. Uh, the other one is just, uh. Giving notice of the public hearing. On the ordinance, it doesn't, uh, list. Anything.
We were going to hold a separate public hearing on this. So we were trying, my recollection is we were doing two things in parallel. One was getting ready so that it doesn't run out of time. To not let it lapse, right? We want everyone to be in compliance with the law. We want the good things that are going, we want them to continue clearly. That's the May ninth. That can happen, public hearing, we go toward that. If we're gonna make the other things happen, then it was a different public hearing, thinking we would have a room full of people who wanted to be heard. And I think that was May twenty third because it's at our evening meeting. Is that where we were trying to be at?
That is not the evening meeting.
Maybe it was just the next time it could publish in time.
May twenty third is a nine AM meeting.
As the auditor has on here. As the auditors, he has that you're approving the notice of public hearing next week. And then with the publishing deadlines, we wouldn't be able to ha, hold the first public hearing. Until, and I'm gonna make a correction. It's, it's gonna be Tuesday, May thirty first. Uh, May thirtieth is a, is a recognized holiday. So that would be your first public hearing would be Tuesday and the evening meeting.
Last meeting, last Monday, we were making faster steps. You, okay, that was, we were trying to move faster.
Okay.
Than the timeline that Kevin had laid out because we were not anticipating two additional public hearings. But right now we have to have some public hearing for people to be able to talk about. Anything, should it continue? Should there be a time change? Maybe there are people in the community who wanted it to end at the end of the June.
Well, could we run? Run them simultaneous? Approve both of the public hearings, one for removal of sunset clause and then one for the amendments to the ordinance.
Okay, I've dealt with ordinances for over twenty years. Uh, I would suggest. Because you have people coming forward that do want minor changes to the ordinance and the hours and the routes. And you want to remove the sunset clause. If you set the public hearing. For people to be heard at that public hearing, you can, um, does, or decide what changes will be made. And you could have your, um, make the amendments to the ordinance. All three amendments would be done at the same time and. You don't have to have your second and third readings. You can waive those. You would be, even with the publication only taking in the two papers once a week, you would still be within your deadlines. To have it published because the ordinance has to be published because it takes effect. It doesn't take effect until it's published in the paper. So to meet all the deadlines. You could do this at one reading, publish the ordinance, it's in effect, and then the people that want the hours changed. By time you hold your three public hearings just for the sunset clause. And then you hold public hearings to change the time. You're in the summer and these people want their hours changed now. And this way you could be within the timeline. And do both the amendments and, and remove that, that sunset clause. This is my suggestion.
So then that's not the, uh. Notice of public hearing that we want to approve them.
I don't think we're approving anything today, it sounds like.
Pardon?
I don't think we're approving anything today, I mean.
No, well, we have to approve the notice of public hearing, don't we?
Can we put up the notices? Dawn, can you put up the notices of public hearings? Could we see what we're talking about?
Yeah, I have.
A work session.
I know it's a work session, but I have the public, a notice of public hearing for May twenty third at nine AM for both of them. The other one doesn't have the sunset clause. Part thirteen sunset clause on it. So do we need to approve one of them or? Just approve the public hearing for the twenty third for the.
Amendments. We'll have to, we'll, if you want to have it on the twenty third, we'll need one of these notices approved today so we can publish for next Wednesday to hold it on the twenty third. So one of these would need to be approved today.
This amendment that we're looking at here today is open ended. It doesn't have. The details related to the sunset. It's just, we're going to review this ordinance and we could change one thing or a hundred. I would propose we change three things. Twenty eight thirty one, which is sunset clause, which is the date of it ending. Twenty eight thirteen, which is hours of operation. And then. At least in my document, appendix A or referred to as addendum A. So it's got two names. That's basically the roads. That are restricted. So just those three items. But I wouldn't have to call those out because we could change any of the items by using. This one, right?
Agreed.
Okay. I think I'm clear now. And so your, your motion was related to the, the previous, uh. Document.
My motion was to make clear. That we were removing. This, what's. Legally called the sunset clause. It is misunderstood broadly in the community. But it is removing the, the ending of the ordinance. Which I think is what. Most people generally want to know whether we're going to continue the ordinance or not. That's, I think, simple and clear.
I think everybody knows we're going to continue the ordinance and what we want to do is just make some amendments to it, but we have a timeline to follow. And I, this is. The second notice of public hearing is the one that I prefer to go with, that we can make those amendments. As Mary said, we can. Make those changes and waive the hearings and everything will stay right on timeline.
Both of these were created by the auditor after Monday's conversations.
Right. And the one that you had made the motion on was basically just.
We have a motion in a second on.
You have a motion and a second. On the first. Notice. For the. Sunset, remove the sunset clause. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, may.
May.
Aye.
I will make a motion to approve the notice of inner document of the ten thirty workstation, work session, excuse me. It's called the NPH, Notice of Public Hearing. ATV, Public Input Hearing, which is shown on the screen. The courtroom, it's court, in the courthouse today. May twenty third, public hearing.
I will second that.
Okay.
Discussion.
So the ordinance terminates at the end of June, is that correct?
We can remove it with this.
I'm just asking, I want to make sure we don't inadvertently in all our cleverness run out of time. Right? That's the worst thing that can happen is that it collapses for two weeks. That's ridiculous. So if we do this, we have a public hearing on the twenty third, we don't know what it is that we're gonna be trying to draft or redraft.
Well, we can remove the sunset clause with this and we can make amendments to the time and the roads. We all know there's roads that we need to change.
And they'll need to write it. And council will need to review it and then it needs to come back to us to look at the final language. I mean, in order, it's not, it's an ordinance. So it takes a little bit of structure. To get this so that it's right. And I just don't want us to be. You know, CJ, you're nodding your head. It's gotta be, we got some work to do here to change an ordinance no matter what.
Agreed, Supervisor McDonough. And I'll state again. Agreed, we will be changing things. And it doesn't have to be hard, it can be easy. Three items, at least from this chair. You guys have your own chairs. Twenty eight thirty one, twenty eight thirteen. And what's known as appendix A or addendum A. That's it. That's all I'm interested in changing. It's not the whole world. I've been through this movie before. I don't want to repeat it. Okay, three items. It's all I'm looking to change. And I think it's fair enough that we have a public hearing where people have that. Those are my three. And we hear, maybe there's three more, maybe there's three less. To just lock it in to what you believe we should do, I think is not fair to the public, that, uh. Should have public input on this, both for and against the items I'm proposing to change.
There's nothing, I have no motive here, okay? There's no motive. My, my concerns about public safety have been proven to be. Good adequate concerns, but you've all written, risen to the task. Well done. That's, that's a huge success for Dubuque County to have learned to ride and do it well. I don't have a motive here. I'm trying to make sure that we do this so that we don't have some kind of a collapse. We should be able to do this and also. It tell you what the mayors have said to me. They'd really like to see the state do this. So that they're not in the road, right? So how do you do that? So we've got our decision. We're moving forward and, you know, we'll see how it all comes out. That's great, democracy.
I think the changes are pretty easy. Uh, I think the roads will be agreeable on. I think the roads will be agreeable on the times, or maybe some discussion on.
Ask the sheriff about the time.
I'm familiar with that aspect of it and several other aspects of it. So I I I think it'll be easy for us to come to consensus on that and move forward and get it posted in the amount of time.
Very good, I'm committed.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the notice of public hearing for May twenty third at nine AM. That will be for the ordinance on the ATV, UTV. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we'll go to the ten forty-five Dubuque County Mental Health Fund ten project progress report. Sorry. It'll be on the twenty third. Like Ron kind of stated, everybody's feelings on that already for the times and.
One. Good morning, Anne Cameron Williams from the Dubuque County Mental Health and Disability Services. Today, brief update. Uh, just to let you know that we are on track for spending every dollar that the Board of Supervisor approved for fund balance projects earlier this year. Sworn around and connected with almost every organization. I'm still waiting a phone call back from one of them, but there were no concerns from any individual organization leadership that thought they were not going to be expending those funds. And and there was, could you put that back, were you?
Yep.
Are you messing with my presentation? Right, um, thank you for that. On Thursday, I received updated information that I did not have when I submitted my paperwork to Ed Raiber on that. So and if you can expand that, I just can't even read a word that's on there. So you can just see, these are all of the fund balance projects. We're really um getting up in the um in the percentages of spend down for most of them. Clark University is zero because their program has not happened yet. It is scheduled to happen. It's a training program that's happening in May. And then, once they have the training, they will they will ask for reimbursement um from the region on that. Do you have any questions? I do believe River View Center also submitted claims to a large extent, I think to like sixty seven thousand dollars of the seventy thousand on um Wednesday, but it was not yet captured by our data. So we're in, we're in good, good situation here.
Well, I, and I appreciate you doing all this, Anne. You take my calls and I'm like, find out what's going on because I get nervous. And you know, when I'm at a regional governing board and they show that we're not spending the money. I mean, there's no second chances at this. It's got to be out the door or we've lost opportunity. So I appreciate you reaching out to those people. I I am concerned, though, about the geriatric brain health. That is a report we should be getting, and I would think they would know more about. I mean, that's a, that's our due back a report to us. And so just, that doesn't seem like very much is being done there.
So after talking with Mike Fidgen specifically about that, I had the same concerns. He assured me that they were doing the work, that that you would be pleased with the report, that they are uh either preparing or going to be preparing from the data that they've been collecting. So it's an active project. One thing that we might wish to consider is Supervisor McDonough just said, there is a process of reallocating. We cannot e- reallocate funds. If we have a standing contract, say for a hundred thousand dollars, we cannot just simply say, we're gonna take away fifteen thousand dollars from your your um fund balance project unless we have that conversation with the provider who agrees to sign a release of that fifteen thousand dollars. And then, once we have that in hand, then we're in a position where we can expend those monies. Otherwise, I would be worried that we would be out out um exceeding our spending authority. So I'm gonna stand firm and and help us not be in that position. At the same time, should one of these projects, as we're looking at June fifteenth.
Time's over, Anne. There's no more wiggle room. May twelfth, Thursday of this week, is the last opportunity for the region to make any changes.
Exactly right. So that's, that's why I think we've got the commitments from the individual providers to to actually spend the money in the way they promised you.
But if they don't spend it, it comes back, then well, it'll go to the state.
It goes to the region.
Or to the region.
And then the region machinations will affect what funding we get next year from the state.
You're making them aware that they have to get it spent, so.
I I believe they are all highly aware of that, and I'm the person that calls with the big stick sometimes. Make sure you're spending that money. It's a, it's a, and they they return my calls, isn't that awesome? That's it. Last.
Questions?
Yeah.
No, thank you. Thank you for the update.
Last thing, I'm just gonna hand out, these are brand new, um, these are for jail diversion resource guide, and I'm gonna make sure you have each of these, these are brand new.
Thank you. I see the sheriff's here as well, maybe he, do you have one for him? These were handed out to the regional governing board. These were at the regional governing board, and I wasn't in person due to a conflict. So I asked that Anne, get these to us. Some good information about jail diversion throughout the region.
Thank you, Anne.
Uh, next we'll move to the work session for discussion and tentative funding allocations for ARP funds.
That was a big day, record day for us, right? Five million, plus the other official ones. Can you bring up that?
Do you have your list up there, Dawn? I believe we start with four mounds, if I'm not mistaken.
One in our document, right, or our packet?
No, we have a live.
There you go.
Okay. Okay, so you'll you'll, you're taking in consideration the approvals from today? Is that what you're saying, what's changed? Good enough, I'm not sure anything changed between Thursday, when you posted this, and today versus what we just decided. And you. Is there anything wrong with working off the PDF that's a little clearer? I mean, I do spreadsheets a lot, but your PDF seems pretty clear. Okay.
Do you want the microphone, Ed? That would be more helpful to me.
Sounds good, I'm I'm good.
What we, uh, this is Ed Raiber. What we do, most of the meetings in which you discuss this stuff, in the board packet is a PDF file. That's all of the documents in the board packet are that. As you discuss these things, in order to be responsive to what you do, we try to have a live spreadsheet here. I may hope my colleague here in a moment sit there to to do that, but we'll take the notes actually live in the spreadsheet as you move along.
Okay. First up would be the Four Mounds Foundation. The Community Access Engagement at Four Mounds, five hundred thousand dollars. Unity Center or Access Point.
It's a bathroom.
Pardon?
It's a bathroom.
Sorry.
It's a bathroom at Four Mounds.
Bathroom. More than just a bathroom, but. Jay, any uh feelings on that?
I've been to Four Mounds numerous times and I've seen some of their programming. It's generally good. Um, I could see their their need, um, that they don't have a, you know, common or a group location that people can use for their facilities when they have larger events and or their ropes course and the various programs. I wouldn't say it scored high on my list compared to others. So I would say I'm lukewarm.
I uh read it over, I mean, it it is a good proposal. It's, I I can see the need, but I recall Four Mounds is city property, and uh Four Mounds does do a lot of good things, but I'm not sure I'm up to five hundred thousand dollars on the bathroom or in classrooms. I guess there'd be some input with the city on it. Like I say, I believe Four Mounds is city properties and.
Yeah, owned by the city and then managed by Four Mounds nonprofit, yes. That's my understanding.
Anne?
I'm I'm not in favor of this, so I'm a zero.
I don't know if I'm at a zero, but I'm definitely not at five hundred thousand. I think I'd want a little more information to see if there'd be a way the city would partner on part of that. Jay, your thoughts?
I I think I'm following your logic, I'm with you on that train of thought. So if we hypothetically had a dollar amount and the city would match it, that would be what you're kind of thinking?
Something to that effect, that.
Okay. I would be, I would be open to that and certainly welcome that ask back to the nonprofit. I think we'd ask the nonprofit if they would want to resubmit a number with matching funds from the cities, that would.
Right.
I'm I'm comfortable with that, if we'd make that request. Do we want to have a dollar amount attached to it? Because they might say, well, if it's one dollar, it might be easy. If it's four ninety-nine, that might be harder. What do you?
I would say that we would match what the city puts in. You know, the city wants to pay for half of it, we'll pay for half if they're only gonna put in fifty thousand, well, we'll put in fifty thousand.
I, I'm comfortable with that.
Put that in. Reach out to Four Mounds, see what, uh, see if they can come up with something. So just put a hold on that one for now. Okay, thank you.
I can't hear you, Ed.
He's gonna make that request. Next, we have Goodwill Industries of Northeast Iowa Inclusion Works for six hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars. This is for uh disabled uh people helping them find jobs, which there's several organizations already helping with that. Uh, I think Goodwill is contracted to Northeast Iowa Workforce Development Board. Title one uh things. Thinking this is kind of an overlap, uh, Northeast Iowa Workforce Development Board just uh put ex- and I think two extra employees in Dubuque here to help with uh workforce issues. I'm not real supportive on that. Seems pretty high.
Yep.
I got nothing to say, go ahead.
Jay?
Say it's another one, I'm lukewarm on, I know they had, uh, you know, kind of a, a marketing outreach to uh to the businesses, and then they had uh events scheduled, led to a speaker. I can see the need, I'm not sure if that's the best method to to resolve their issues. I mean, I wouldn't claim to be an expert, but I don't know if we want to be funding the actual events of a speaker coming from out of town, just seems out to reach for rescue funds.
I just, like I said, it's a duplication of services and I'm not I just don't think it's the right place for that.
I think it's a great proposal, it's just, it's really a great proposal.
Oh, it's a good proposal.
Proposal, and it's all, it's it's matching people with disabilities with jobs they can do in a workforce where we need them, with a coach, with a mentor, and they're asking us for assistance in making that message be bigger. It's a great application. I just don't think we can afford it any longer.
It is a great application, but I also believe they're getting funded from the Northeast Iowa Workforce Development Board to do that.
I don't know that, I don't know anything about that.
I believe so.
Okay, very good.
Sounds like that one will not move forward.
Did you want to make a motion to deny the request then, or how do you want to handle that? But is there something we need to do to move these administratively?
It's Ed Raiber. If you, um, because it's a work session, you're not really taking action. If just by your verbal consensus, you ask us to do any of these actions, we just noted here, and that project, if it does not have any support, we will call it denied. And um, uh, moving forward, it would move to the bottom of this list. So not asking for any formal action, but we're just understanding this, they'll just not be moving forward with a resolution or anything later.
Again. Next to be the HACAP, uh, the Affordable Housing, five hundred and twenty-five thousand. Turning that in.
I would take no action, that is not my preferred housing. Um, I think we're in competition with individuals, as I said at the work session. This is in direct competition with first-time home buyers.
Sorry, what?
It's in direct competition with first-time home buyers. They want to buy properties that are inexpensive and renovate them, and then sell, then then give them to a few people. And I don't think that is just not my, that's not how I would prefer to look at housing. So I would not take action on this under the guidelines I just heard Ed Raiber state.
Okay.
It it wasn't one of my priorities. Housing is very challenging, very difficult. The county hasn't been in the housing game as much as the city and others. I would probably be at a lot less funding if we did fund, fund anything, but that might not be viable related to their attempt to purchase homes and assets.
Right, I uh, I would agree with Anne that it is in direct competition with the people trying to buy homes. People trying to buy homes. You know, they're trying to buy them and rehab them, but I. Just don't feel it's the right place for the. Rescue funds at this time. I would be in favor of not moving it forward. Next would be the Holy Family Catholic Schools, the expansion and renovation of the Holy Ghost Ghost Early Childhood Care Center. That's for five hundred and eighty-five thousand to for daycare.
Where are you at on it, Harley? Where are you at on that?
I think it is a need. Obviously childcare is a huge need in. County here. It was a very good presentation. I think they. Definitely. Have the right. Combination to get people their location and staff. I could be flexible on the amount, but I I would be willing to move that forward. Your thoughts?
I would move it forward.
I'm definitely supportive. We've made some good headways with the with childcare issues related to both the in-home with Dubuque County Early Childhood. And some of the centers like this one. So definitely a supporter. If the board is at five eighty-five, I would support that. If there's a little lesser amount. I'm I'm willing to agree to that as well, but I think it's one of those priorities related to childcare that. Would help move that along in a really good area of the of the county as well that probably has the strongest needs.
I think we'll just move it forward for this time and. They can decide it on amount. Excuse me, sorry. At the next discussion. Julian. Julian Dubuque International Film Festival.
And I think it's an easy one. The the demand for requests is modest and I think the impact that it has related to Dubuque and and just the goodwill, the. Expansion of the arts and just one additional small little feather in the cap of. Of Dubuque related to the arts and or tourism. Twenty-six thousand, six hundred. I'm a full supporter at that level.
This event has already taken place. It directly relates to COVID nineteen recovery for the festival that just occurred. My very dear friend is the president of this organization, but I would not move it forward in terms of other priorities at this time.
I would go along with not moving that before work. It. The event is over with.
Comment. They do have they do have it annually, so I'm sure they would find a use for the funds.
Well, they can apply for the purchase service for next year.
Thank you, yes.
That's a modest ask. Northeast Iowa Community College Entrepreneurial Resource Hub. I turn to start or you can start, Jay. I don't care.
I'll start. This is, you know, an area that I work at with. With my position at Northeast Iowa Community College and my Small Business Development Center grant. So maybe to to set the stage, we we have the resources related to physical locations established. So with Creative Adventure Lab, with our new Creative Venture Lab hub in Dyersville, with one in Cascade and a series of others in the surrounding area outside of our our county. We have some of the the physical spaces to to host entrepreneurs, coworking and events. What we're lacking and what this provides is some of the professional expertise and actually a person. Part of the big part of the budget is a full-time employee to move forward the initiatives related to the program and specifically related to creating. Small amounts of. Private equity, for better word, or angel funding. For those entrepreneurs to get them launched and this very small component of the well of it is for underserved and minority representation as well in this space. So I'm a I'm a big supporter of it. It was kind of the vision that was occurred with startup Dubuque. If you remember that thing, it's kind of now defunct, but eight years ago. There was the designs to have a full-time person and to to move these initiatives forward and it just it it just never occurred. And so this is an opportunity to to try to fill that gap.
I guess I. Tend to disagree with you on a little bit. I think we have. The Creative Adventure Labs in Dubuque and Dyersville and Cascade and they do have a person on staff that works with the entrepreneurs. Helping get things up and running. Guess I'm a little confused on it as I think it's just a duplication of services again and I'm trying to avoid that and the ask is pretty steep.
I'd move it forward. I would move it forward.
Okay, that one will go forward. Next Smokestack Industries LLC Rehabilitation of Smokestacks Property, Fakades. Life. Safety Systems and ADA Compliance. And I. I can start on this one. It is a unique property. But it is. A privately owned property. We're going to start giving. Money to one business or one tavern business to. Redo their structure. I think there's several other. Bar owners that would probably be more than happy to take some funds also to rebuild. My personal opinion. I mean, like I said, it is. A unique property, but. I don't think it's the right place for the ARP funds.
I don't think it's the right place for the Arbor Funds.
I would agree with you you two as well. Another comment would be that though I do appreciate what Smokestack and and other businesses have done in hosting. A variety of nonprofits and they continue to to do that. And so they have a lot of community valid value, but it's we just. Can't directly earmark to a a private venue because there's be a long line.
Next, Travel Dubuque. That one was moved forward. That's taken. Hero.
Saint Mark.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't.
You just finished Smokestack.
Yeah, Saint Mark's Youth Enrichment Apples for Students, sixty thousand.
The history, they'll look back and go, wow, apples must have been really expensive in twenty twenty-two.
And this is an organization I have deep ties to. But for the apples for students, they will reach this goal through other private funding. I'm no action on this.
I'm comfortable with that.
I'm comfortable with that.
The next Saint Mark is just a the tail of their initial request that we funded the purchase of services, so I would. Deny the heroes, the fifty-five hundred dollars, just to make sure that moves off the spreadsheet. Motion to deny.
I thought I had a thing where that one was withdrawn, but maybe I don't know.
So do I need a motion, Ed, or not? I'll withdraw my motion. No action.
Steeple Square is Mobility, Food Security and a Vibrant Future, five hundred thousand dollars.
Like to move that forward?
I'm a supporter of the project as well, so definitely would would want to move it forward. The dollar amount would probably be the one I would want to. Discuss, but I'm a supporter of the project.
Okay, that'll move forward.
I think you turned the page. I turned the page to the green section.
Something happened here. Lost where it was. That's why I keep getting lost. Somebody keeps moving the page on me. Was that the last one on that? Oh, yeah, the High Tri-State. That was withdrawn. I'm sorry. And then we go to the. Broadband Infrastructure. Investments. City of Bangston, Bangston Wastewater System Upgrade Project, three hundred thousand. Can start on that. I would definitely love to help the small towns out. That one. Has some issues with. The church being connected to that. My understanding. Not sure how to get around that aspect of it. Because it would be definitely benefiting the church and I don't believe the federal funds can go to that.
Yeah, the city ones are are challenging because as stated before, we have twenty-one cities in in the county. One of the pieces that stands out with with Bangston is they don't have any specific city incorporated property taxes. Is that? That's my understanding. I see some head nodding. Whereas. Nineteen of our other cities. Do have a a standing property tax levy to help them with their operations of things they need. I know water and sewer are usually restricted accounts, but there there definitely would be some overlay there. I'd be interested in matching. If they had funds matching, I mean, I think I think when we get down to Rickardsville, I I believe in their presentation, they have already have raised raised their levy. Or plan to raise. They might already raised their taxes. So that's that's a commitment. And so if Bangston has that interest, I'm I'm interested in in potentially matching or providing funding on those conditions.
Are you thinking that on both of the Bangston projects?
Yes, yes. Follow I haven't been following a similar path as Rickardsville. Where they have. They have additional income coming in to help support these projects, not solely relying on on our funding.
No, the problem with Bangston is they only have like seven houses to levy on.
Great. Now that's a that's the double edged swords of being an incorporated city.
Ian?
I don't I honestly have known about Bangston situation for two years, maybe. I don't. I still don't have a solution. I don't. I don't have a solution. I'm waiting for someone to suggest one. So. I would be interested in a match opportunity. I don't know what we would expect them to do to match. If they unincorporate, I don't think it helps anybody.
I wonder if it would be a possibility to have a breakout to what it would cost for. The houses for the septic and what it would cost for the church. And the church would have to pay for their own hookup to it.
Well, that's what the math gets interesting in is if you take those numbers and divide by the service accounts or the number of houses, it's pretty steep. It's a. High per cost.
Right.
Per per household. That's that's the benefit of having. More population in your community is that you share those costs. I I I'm not at this moment. I don't feel I can walk down the path with the city of Bangston and try to solve their issues. I don't have solutions. The only offer I would have is if they have funds available to match, potentially we could we could do that. I think that would be fair and whether they come from their tax base or they come from another grant from outside sources, then I'm open.
I would move it forward, not intending to necessarily make an award, but to not deny it. And then maybe we can, you know, we've reached out to. Four Mounds to talk about how they might, we might do a match. Maybe we Ed can draft a match letter or something. I mean, I I don't know how to be helpful there.
That they'll have to come up with some kind of funding. We can't fund all of it, so.
Is this a request for all of it? I think it is for all of it.
Yeah, I said we can't come up with all of them.
Right.
Next is the City of Rickardsville Sewer Relocation along Highway Three, five hundred thousand dollars.
I'd move this forward so we can see where the funding is when by moving it forward for me, it means I need to see a spreadsheet. Where we can make a grant and see what funds we have left, right? Because I'm very interested in helping the city. It is a. They have raised taxes. They have done all the things. We have been at meetings where they are applying for app for grant funds.
Right. They've tripled their sewer rates and. Their levies and everything trying to come up with the money, so. I'd definitely be in favor of moving that forward.
Yeah, I think a comment I mean shortly earlier still stands. You know, I think they have made changes. They've they've increased their their tax levy. They've applied to. Was it RPA or DMANS? I forget which one. Maybe RPA, RPA for for funding. So they've reached out to other entities to try to solve this and. I think potentially we could help them with the the last component.
Next on the agenda is Dubuque Community YMCA, YWCA Rehabilitation, hundred and twelve thousand. New road leading to the camp.
The only nonprofit, I think, somebody can correct me, that asked for more money because their costs went up. They increased their request to us, so they wished us to pay a hundred percent of this. And because their costs, other people have been listening and watching and have cut costs rather dramatically to say, well, this is really our our bottom dollar, our bottom number. So. You know, we can move it forward to see if there's any money left, but it's not a high priority for me.
I concur. It's not a real high priority. I know you can probably work it in, but I didn't see anywhere in the ARP thing where roads were. Covered under those funds, but. Maybe under assisting a nonprofit, I guess you could maybe. Weasel that in. I shouldn't say weasel it in, but make it fit.
We learned this morning, we've got our own road problems. We. We're seventy thousand dollars. Over budget and we've already pulled one project from our roads, but different kind of road. One's owned by a nonprofit, one's owned by the county, but everybody's got increased costs, so it's not a high priority for me.
I know they have a lot of traffic there with the zip lining and. Whatever, but I guess they also have the opportunity to raise. Funds. You know, from the zip lining or whatever, so I guess.
Yeah, and I and I did meet with the director, Tony, on this. And so they do have operating income and they do have, you know, endowment, maybe endowment's the wrong word. They do have donors. Good donors throughout the the community that are helping with this nonprofit go. And so I see this as very similar to the other nonprofits that we've we've funded and so. We 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 once again asked, what are your needs? We didn't say, you know. Didn't restrict those needs. We said, tell us what you need assistance with to 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 be more vibrant. So and I think the ask is modest, so I'm I'm a supporter of some level. At this time.
Okay, you can move it forward and. See where we end on our funding. The Coca River Watershed Management. Coca River Watershed Management Plan Implementation and Support reported two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars.
A three-year total of our annual seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollar. Fee commitment. So basically, in the past, this has come through purchase of services. So seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars annually. And they've asked for that. So seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars annually, and they've asked for that kind of in advance, I think, for several years. Five-year request. So whether you want to use, um, I, I think we have a commitment, I do, to being part of this watershed. I think that's an important role, but that's what that number really is, is five years of much smaller request. So whether we feel we can take this out of the federal rescue funds or have it go through purchase of services, I'm pretty sure it's here because we already told them once to go around and do it this way. You know, use this portal.
I'm supportive of it. I think, you know, we've had good, uh, broad support for our various water quality issues, um, initiatives that we've done. And so I'm very thankful for that. Uh, I was skeptical, uh, that Limestone was going to be able to pull off this, but they've done really good work. I've, I've been to some of their meetings. I've seen their volunteers on social media and on the work they've done. Their water testing alone in McOquada River Watershed, I think, is, is benefit. So I, I'm a full supporter of forty-two thousand. I think this is a really good organization.
Yep, not a problem. You can move that one forward at full funding, Ed.
Do we want to get a resolution on that?
The resolution will come next week, right?
No.
Or in a couple of weeks.
Yeah. I'm okay with that.
Next is the Sustainable Iowa Land Trust Silt Working Buffers for Cleaner Water and Resilient Food Program, five hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars. That is revised from one point six six one.
I think when they were here, when Susan was here, I think she did a great job with the presentation. Uh, you know, I think they had support from our, our watershed group, uh, with Eric Schmeckel being right with her at the podium. I think this ties in well to our existing programs. We've invested heavily in our, uh, ag programs for, for water quality and soil health. And I think this would be another level, a little bit different, more smaller, local farms. Um, and this was a, this was an application that was revised downward. I think maybe just understanding that there's many applicants. Um, so I think this would be a great benefit and it'd be another good resource to be right with, um, you know, Eric and Zach, uh, when they're out there talking to, to local farmers related to this program. And it's been proven around the state.
High priority for me. I would move forward.
Okay. We will move that forward. Uh, obviously the funding will be determined later date once we get to some kind of a level that we have left.
Well, unless you guys have done us at the full amount now, I'm, I'm comfortable with the full amount now.
I don't know that I can afford the full amount right now. I think there are other things that are going to come forward with regard to libraries and such. So I need to see, I would like to see some passage of time to see what we have to spend.
Okay, that takes care of, uh, that discussion. Thank you, colleagues, for moving through that rather quickly.
Is there only one that's coming forward as a resolution then for the forty-two thousand dollars? Okay, just wanted to confirm. That's what I understood too.
Okay, next we have a work session with the Human Resources Administrator regarding collective bargaining, closed session. Be in compliance with Iowa Code Section twenty-one point four.
Twenty.
Both sessions for the purpose of discuss, discussing strategy for upcoming labor negotiations with the county's organized employees pursuant to Iowa Code Section twenty point one seven, Francis Easter.
Motion to recess for five minutes?
I will second that.
A motion to second recess for five minutes. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Chair, do you want to acknowledge that we will be exiting Zoom at this point and just recording through the room as we go into closed session? So this will be the end of the Zoom as well.
We will be going into closed session as we come back from the recess. So Zoom will be shut down.